Welcome to the Pittsburgh Planning Board, Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024. Just going to read a brief statement. Planning Board Opening Comments. All meetings of the Pittsburgh Planning Board are open to the public. This does not mean that the public participates in all aspects of the meeting. It simply means that the meeting itself, including all discussions and votes, is open for public view. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing, please raise your hand and the board will acknowledge you at the appropriate time during the hearing. The board will also monitor any participants that are attending virtually for questions at the appropriate time. Virtual attendees are asked to use the raise hand function to be acknowledged. One, state your name and address. Two, approach the center table and either stand or sit. This allows you to be seen and heard clearly by everyone in attendance. Three, the Planning Board requests that comments be limited to no more than five minutes in the interest of time. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. And I ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by stating their name and address. And there's none, alright. I'm also going to take roll call. Beginning, so we have this for our transcript as well. And I call your names, acknowledge you're here. Amanda?
Here.
Allyn?
Here.
Alex?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
Peter?
Here.
Tracy?
Here.
Paula, here. Great, we have a full board this evening. The first item on our agenda, Approval Not Required Plans, A&Rs, we do not have any this evening. We also do not have any underneath our Minor Site Plan category. So we're straight into public hearings this evening. Our first item is the Senior Road Act in a joint hearing with the Planning Board and the Tree Warding regarding a tree cutting proposal off of 239 Mount Elam Road. However, there's a request for continuance because the Tree Warden is unavailable at this time.
Right, hopefully that'll get rectified, hopefully by next month.
Alright. So anybody like to entertain a motion?
Make a motion to continue to our May meeting.
Second.
A motion has been made with a second to continue to our May meeting.
Which is the 28th?
May 28th. I'll take roll call vote on that. Those in favor say aye, those opposed say opposed. Amanda?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. Alright. Our second item this evening is Special Permit in Site Plan. The applicant is Clearwater Real Estate Group, LLC, is proposing to build a three-family residential development at 845 Water Street. This is continued from our March meeting and we do have a request to continue to our next meeting would be on May 28th.
Correct.
Is there anything you wanted to add, Chris? Just checking, I know it's the engineer's office, yeah. I believe I was told it's architectural related, waiting for elevations. Perfect. Make a motion to continue to our May meeting.
Second.
A motion has been made with a second to continue to our May 28th meeting. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed, roll call vote. Back to Amanda.
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. And, let's see, I'm going to take one just out of order only because we're streamlining. We have a Special Permit in Site Plan Review applicant for 320 River Street in the Adaptive Use District, which is requested withdrawn without prejudice. Does any board member have any issue with the request?
Make a motion to grant the request to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
Motion's been made with a second. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed, and roll call vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. So if there was anybody here for those matters. We have in front of us now this evening a site plan review for applicant Amico LLC proposing to build an accessory building of 3,000 square feet in size as an expansion of the existing storage space currently utilized by Amico Flooring on-site. It's located at 59 to 63 Wayland Street in the Neighborhood Business District. Good evening.
Greg, do you want to start with the site plans up on the screen?
Uh, yeah, that'd be great, thank you. Give me 30 seconds here to-
Yep, take your time.
Hold the right application on my back.
Don't worry.
Great, thank you very much. My name is Greg Roy with Dillison Roy, representing the applicant Amico Flooring this evening, and I appreciate your time. You're flying along in your agenda, so I'll try not to put a monkey wrench into that. We were here a month ago to open, well, a month ago, we asked to continue the hearing without testimony because we had a pending matter before the application for variance, before the zoning board of appeals. And I'll summarize how that went in a minute. But the matter at hand, the site plan, as you mentioned, that's before you in the application, involves the proposed 3,000 square foot accessory building. The zoning ordinance has a very narrow definition of what's allowed as an accessory on the property in the zoning district, so variance was required. We did go before this, we did file for a variance and were granted a variance two weeks ago by the zoning board of appeals. So four weeks ago, when we were before your board, that matter was still pending. So we asked for that to be continued without testimony. But we are here this evening to pick that up, to pick up the site plan review, knowing now that the zoning board has acted to grant the variance that was requested to allow the accessory use as proposed. So I'll just give you a quick summary. As was mentioned, the property is at 59 to 63 Wayland Street. The Wayland Street is on the northerly side or the up, the top part of the screen. It's not labeled on this, you can't see the label on this plan. There you go, thank you. And then the property actually also fronts on South Street, as you can see labeled there on the southerly side of the, and lower side of the page. There's an existing three-unit structure, two-story structure on the property. There's quite an elevation change from the top portion, which is on the northerly upper side of the plan, off of Wayland Street. There's three retail spaces that exist on the upper side. On the lower side, off of South Street, there is a lower level that comprises of storage used by the applicant. And approximately 10 years ago, a plan was prepared by the applicant and actually approved by your board, perhaps not you specifically, but the Planning Board. A site plan was approved for a rather large addition to the west, I'm going to call it Plan West. I'm not sure if the, what the exact northerly is on the plan. But to the left of the screen, there was a rather large addition proposed and approved and granted site plan approval for approximately 6,000, just over 6,000 square feet of addition, two-story addition at the time was proposed for additional retail space on the upper level with additional storage space in the amount of about 3,100 square feet of storage space on the lower level. At the time that that was approved, the applicant determined that that was not a feasible, financially feasible project for him, given particularly, especially in this location, it was due to the presence of ledge on the site and the topography that exists on the left-hand portion of the existing building as you're looking at the plan. So you fast forward to today or last fall, when they contacted our office, they're looking to build a more modest-sized storage building at the property that would allow them to expand the storage space on the property only. So the building that you have here in front of you is on the lower left-hand side and is a 50 by 60-foot, single-story detached, so accessory, structure on the property. And it would be used only for storage. So we would be using it by the applicant to expand his operations and to use it for storage. It's a, that portion of the site is much flatter and so it can be constructed in a much more cost-effective manner. There is some grading that we would need to accommodate, so we proposed a retaining wall around the left and upper side of the proposed addition. But it's a lot less extensive than the significant foundation that was proposed and approved 10 years ago. So that's really, that's really it. In the zoning district, there are no required side yard or front yard zoning offsets. We have kept the side yard setback. I think we're greater than 20 feet, I don't think it's labeled on this particular plan, but we're greater than 20 feet to the, to that side yard. Or maybe I'm missing the lot line, maybe we're about 10 feet to where that lot line is. The South Street is really the portion of the site where we're closest to the lot lines. We have pulled the building back two feet just to ensure that we can keep footings and things completely contained on the subject site. There would be three garage bays, sort of high bay storage, thank you, right as is indicated on the plan there. And we would fill in the paving between the proposed face of the proposed building and the existing pavement with, existing parking lot with new paved areas. The building, of course, as I mentioned, would be separate and detached from the existing building. You can see our dimension there, we have it about 11 feet off the existing building. I know that your board, a month ago or prior to the previous hearing, in addition to wanting to wait on the zone, to see that the zoning board had acted, had asked us for three additional things. The first was to present a landscaping plan. We did prepare that, a colored plan, and a colored-up landscaping plan to augment the landscaping details that we had submitted along with the site plan application. Thank you, Paul. And then, secondly, you asked us for a parking analysis. So we, I think last week, along with the landscaping plan, submitted a memo or a letter to your board outlining, analyzing the parking of the site as a whole, not just the proposed accessory use, but we took a look at the entire parking on a macroscopic level on-site. And then third, you asked us for a building elevation. And I apologize, that was a little bit late in coming, but we did email that over to Chantel. Thank you, I'm glad to see that you got it. I apologize again that that was so late, but we just got that hot off the press this afternoon. So I think with that, I will pause. I'm sure that you have some questions. Oh, I wanted to also mention, we did analyze the site relative to stormwater management. We did submit, along with the application, stormwater calculations, which I'm certain that at some point the Department of Public Works, Engineering Department, will be interested in taking a look at. With that, I'll stop, Madam Chair, and ask, take any questions or comments.
Thank you for the overview. Any board members have any questions at this time?
I do, if you want to do that first, if you want to do, okay. So I had a couple, the first was, what's the max height of the retaining wall in the back?
Great question.
Approximate.
Yeah, I think we're upwards around 10 feet in the worst spot.
So there's going to be a fence on the top of the retaining?
There is, yes.
That was my question, alright.
Absolutely, yeah.
Good.
There's a fence and then all adjacent to the parking that's on the adjacent building, 43 Wayland Street. There'll also be a guardrail put along that parking, just to make sure we're-
And the fence on top of the retaining wall is going to be what material? I don't want it to be chain link, ideally.
Okay.
And if it is, in this, I guess the conversation the board can have, you know, recently I've been okay with, you know, if you have like vinyl coated chain link, where you have the, you know, not the galvanized steel, because it rusts and looks terrible. The other alternative, and I suppose the more preferable alternative would be, you know, some sort of aluminum or wrought iron or whatever.
Yeah, I don't know that we specified that, the material, so if the board has an opinion on that, we certainly would-
Yeah, right here. Right, it's going to run, it's going to run that whole L shape, right? Basically the whole retaining wall until you get to, I assume, what? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I have my screen paused. Sorry, I always forget.
Yeah.
So you see my cursor here?
Yep.
So it runs basically along here, and then it's going to, I assume the slope gets smaller and smaller-
That's correct.
-as you get to South Street. So at some point, the fence ends before you get to the end of the retaining wall.
That's correct. Well, I think we kind of are just showing it up the whole way, because for all intents and purposes, it'll be four feet. We intend to use a larger format block for that.
Okay. My only concern, and it shouldn't be because it's in line with the building, would be any visibility issues, especially coming out of this parking area, the building, or now-
I have a question, would you just not put a guardrail along with the parking, the paved parking area is?
We have-
Are you talking about up here, right?
I don't think we need it there, because I think we're far enough back, but we did put it on the park, right there.
So you have a guardrail there?
Yes, we did.
Okay. That leads, I guess, into my next question, which is, so obviously you're two feet from the edge of the property line. Is this, am I correct that this line right here is edge of pavement?
Correct.
So you're still, even though you're two feet from the property line, it looks like you're 10 or so feet from edge of pavement?
Yeah, a little bit better than 10 feet.
Yeah, 10, 12 feet, something like that?
Yep.
Okay, so that makes me feel a little bit better that we're not right up to the edge of pavement, which is much more concerning.
Right.
And then, I think I heard Mr. Amico say at the ZBA meeting that the building height was like 10-ish feet, 10, 12 feet?
Uh, I think, well, it probably wasn't labeled, of course.
Yeah, it's not labeled on that rendering.
I think he had, I think it's, I thought I remember him saying 14 to the highest point in the front.
That's probably 10 here, 14 here, something like that, that's fine. I'm just trying to get a ballpark idea for, you know, obviously we don't want a towering building there.
Understood.
Even at 14, it's going to tuck into that corner. I know I watched the ZBA meeting and I know Mr. Donley and I believe Chair Tree had concerns about particularly landscaping. And, you know, they alluded to it was going to be brought up in our meeting. And I do see the landscaping plan there, but I don't see any detail as to what that entails other than grass.
There should be a planting schedule, so we have on the left-hand side of the screen-
Oh, maybe I just didn't zoom out far enough?
Yeah, if you pan, there's a planting. So there's symbols that you see in the greener, darker green symbols with the Latin name.
So it's all in this corner right here, on the opposite side?
We have some there, and then we have some on the top of the, there, and then we have some on the, down on the left-hand side of the proposed, right in there.
Okay.
And then we're also-
These ones in particular, I think will be nice, screening the, what you can see, the backside of the building that isn't tucked into the slope.
Yep.
So I think that certainly makes sense. I, and I think, I don't know if I've told you this specifically, but I've mentioned it over and over again in the last few meetings, that, you know, one of the bigger concerns is that, you know, we don't have trees too close to the property line. That way, you know, we don't have root systems that destroy our streets or sidewalks or anything like that. I think you're far enough away, but you might want to just run that by DPW before you plant anything.
I guess that was the aspect of whether or not there should be anything up against the building fronting South Street, because you get a residence, residences right across the street.
We are proposing-
There's only two feet in front of the building.
Well, we're proposing some ornamental grasses there.
Okay.
We have some, trying to do something there. Like I said, we didn't want to put a larger plant in the right-of-way, that would, you know, that would, you know, either the roots would expand or even the canopy would expand into the right-of-way. But we're proposing some ornamental, just to soften that facade a little bit from the, as you're looking at it from South Street.
Yeah, because it's just the side of a metal building, so you want to-
Right.
That would be helpful. I also see on the right-hand side to the entrance, also some plantings.
Correct, yeah. We're just basically, there's not a lot of green space on that part of the site. So we tried to grab what green space we had available and, you know.
Well, it looks like it's all trap rock now. There's some photos I took of the site.
Yeah, I'm pulling them up right now. I was in the middle of that as you were saying that. Alright, so this is the left-hand side of the existing Amico building, so one lot down. And then you get to this site, which is, so this is basically here is where you're proposing plantings, from what I can see?
Right on the hill where you see the-
Or is it right here?
Yeah, right there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Potentially you can do anything around the telephone pole to kind of make it so it just doesn't look like it in the-
Telephone pole to the left on this picture, or that one?
Right there, is it?
Right there, well, that's actually right in the middle of the paving.
Right, so that's why, do you put just a little, just anything around it a little bit?
That's in the public way, though.
Oh, it isn't?
It is.
It's definitely, it's definitely in the public way, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I guess it would be.
Yeah.
Be wherever there would, if there was a sidewalk there.
Yeah, right, it'd be in the sidewalk, yeah, if there were one. So the one thing that immediately came to mind was obviously this dumpster. The plan, and even the recorded plan, I believe said to be screened and fenced, and it never was or isn't. And I think your plan says enclosed dumpster. So I think at the very least, you need some sort of, you know, decorative vinyl fencing. Now, you can't see, you're protected by that back wall, I think. So I don't know if, I don't know if it needs to go all the way around it, we can talk about that. But certainly, screening from South Street.
South Street.
Yeah, I mean, you need something to screen it from there. It shouldn't be just open, open air.
Yep.
And, you know, I don't know, you know, I'm not going to speak for the fire department, but I also don't think it goes there at the bottom of the stairs. That seems like a fire code issue, if you look at where it is right now.
Yeah.
So I think it's supposed to go right here, but I don't know. So, these are some pictures that Paul had taken, so this is the location of the building.
That's correct.
You do, I heard you say at the ZBA meeting, you have to tuck into this hill a little bit more?
A little bit, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're creating a flat spot around the building, obviously, for maintenance and just, you know, accessibility of the sides of the, rear and the sides of the building. So that retaining wall, we need to push a little bit into the slope, and obviously it'll be the vertical wall. So I think the top of that slope will remain pretty well, pretty much the same, but we'll need to excavate, you know, and make that a vertical face. So there'll be a little bit of excavation in there. And then when we get down and dig the footings, you know, we think on that far back corner, we'll probably hit into a little bit of ledge as we get in there, but far less than what we would have if we had done the-
And although I haven't, I haven't seen, the permit probably doesn't exist yet, and it's only been a few days.
I haven't seen it yet either.
But I'm sure it doesn't, because it's only been a few days. But I believe they had mentioned something about no blasting, Monday to Friday, rock hammering.
They conditioned the time for hammering, they conditioned no blasting, they conditioned the timeframe for hammering, yeah, I think it was nine to five.
Monday to Friday, I heard that.
Monday to Friday. And then they also, I don't think they limited the time span, but they did require a 500-foot, a button notification-
Yep.
-when that's going to be done, so.
So I would-
Again, yeah, like you, I haven't seen the condition.
Yeah, and they obviously covered that. I don't know that we need to rehash that, but we can just, obviously those will become, you know, binding in our permit as well. Not that they don't have-
I think they cross-referenced any conditions that you might have added in.
We have a little, I think it's easier too for us, it being a special permit, if we include their conditions by reference in the special permit for ease of enforcement.
It's not a special permit for us, just-
Oh, this is just site plan?
This one is just site-
Okay, okay. So, in that case, because there's just a variance, so.
That's correct. I mean, I think you have purview to do that on a site plan.
Yep, yep, yep. And then this is facing towards Route 2. And this is facing back towards downtown Pittsburgh, South Street being on your left and Wayland Street being on your right. For those who aren't aware, South Street on this portion is the quiet portion of South Street. Wayland Street is the continuation of Izzy's South Street.
That's right.
The building, the garage bays would be facing us.
Yeah, they'd be facing right over there, yeah.
Would I be correct in saying that, studying your elevations, there's three doors on the front, one to the right of each garage door?
Let me not say something, I'm correct.
I can pull that back up too, if you want.
That's correct, yep.
Is there, there's also three doors on the rear of the building?
Yes.
So on a storage building, there's six entrance doors?
Yeah.
Any reason for that?
I am not certain on that, to be quite honest with you. Again, I just got this today from the architect.
I'm just thinking that, you know, you generally want a storage building to be as secure as possible.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
With six entrances, I thought maybe each individual garage bay was separate? Maybe a wall in between, and that's why there's so many doors?
They may be doing that. I thought, you know, currently the intent is to use it for the business, for the expansion and operation of Amico Flooring, from what I understand. So I'm not exactly sure. Maybe they're setting it up for future, if they ever wanted to subdivide or something, but I think that, but that's not my understanding of what they're proposing at the time, at this time.
He brings up a good point, though, because now we're looking for a sidewalk or a walkway from the back around to the front. It's not shown, kind of like where does this go, so going into the retaining wall.
Yeah.
So now you're going to have to show some kind of eagles.
Yeah, I mean, we have the room for it, because we've created a 10-foot space between the edge of the, between the edge of the building and the retaining wall, which is, you know, it's the intention for maintenance and things like that. So there'd be room for that, to do that.
If they intend to put the doors at this elevation, then I think you'd be probably going to have to-
The other question that begs is, does the board have concerns-
At least out there.
-that they do subdivide them and rent individual garage bay units to three individual businesses, three individual unit owners? You know, obviously our permit's going to say that the use has to be accessory to the existing use there, which I think inherently means it has to be used by Amico Flooring or Elliott Jewelers or one of the three tenants in that upper building.
Accessory use, but Amico, the variance for that, so it's whatever the, also what the variance is.
Sure, so, I mean, my point is, if we see that there's a concern, we make it a permit condition that only one door on each side, front and back, and which I think is a very reasonable permit condition. But-
If you don't, if you're not interested in putting a walkway in the back of the building, that could be solved very easily by just eliminating the doors.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And you don't need a walkway back there.
Yeah, I guess if it's, I don't have an answer to that, I can't imagine putting a walkway would be very difficult, you know, would be a, I don't think we would object to putting a walkway back there. It's just, I think that it's probably a coordination issue between my office and the architect that we just, you know, that we just got today. So, I mean, if the board feels that they need to condition that, that's fine, I guess, I don't think we would object to putting a walkway.
The alternative is, Greg, and I'm perfectly fine with doing this either way, because I do have concerns that you have someone rent that space that has a more active use than the flooring company or one of the existing businesses. They're meeting people in and out all day. I have concerns about that, given the residential uses across the street. So I think one of the permit conditions will be, or should be, if the board agrees, that this building is only accessory to the uses that are on the site right now, that no one that isn't affiliated, that isn't utilizing one of those four spaces, it being the, obviously the property owner, which isn't on the same property, but the Amico copper building next door, the three tenants in, I think there's three, the three tenants in the building up top are the only ones that are allowed to utilize this building for storage.
The property owner actually is using the bottom of, under the three tenants' space.
What's that?
Amico's also current president, he's the fourth tenant on that property.
That's true, because they use the bottom floor, that's true. Either way, I wouldn't have a problem with them using it because they're the property owner. I just, the concern there is that there's a type of business that, you know, I don't, and I don't have the table of users in front of me, but let's say, and I don't think they can, but let's say it's landscape construction.
Yeah.
That's problematic. You have someone that comes and goes.
That would rise to a contracted storage yard probably, which would probably, I think would require a special permit.
Right. And I think the purpose of that permit would be that if in the future they found someone outside of those tenants there to utilize it, that they come in for a modification and they can explain, parking's adequate for this particular property, for this particular use. Hearing the presentation at the ZBA meeting, it, from what I gathered, it's his intention to use it entirely for their business, so.
That's my understanding.
Perfect. So I-
I don't think I-
I think that's a, I think that's a good, meaning you can leave the doors if you want. And then if the board wants a walkway around, I'm indifferent to that, because you can still, it's going to be flat. You can still get front to back, I'm not worried about that. But my concern is more on what Peter said, that you have a tenant there that is legally allowed to use it, but might have a little more parking demand than the four spaces in front. So, you know, condition it to the existing tenants on-site.
I think you'd also have to add, I don't see any lighting on the building.
Yeah, I think we, I don't think he's proposing anything other than what would be required by code for entry lighting, you know, above the various doors.
My biggest concern would be anything on the front of the building facing the houses.
Yeah, on the, yeah, right. I mean, that's certainly a detail we could- I mean, that's certainly a detail we could, we could add.
It's like, I really don't want to see a walkway come over to the front where the two feet, you know, wrap around towards the frontage, so if you did anything, it would just be in the, like, the back, so you could go from door to door, and I guess you could walk to the front.
I mean, it's basically, when the site's done, it's going to be basically like processed gravel around the building anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's going to be easily accessible.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just a question of, do you want it paved around the building? I, I, I don't think it's necessary, but that's just my-
Okay. Yeah, I agree.
Well, I mean, if it, if it, may, maybe, I mean, maybe we could just let the code sort this out. If the, uh, if, if the architect says those need, you know, we need a, or the building department says that we need it as part of the building, uh, permit plan set, then, you know, we'll, we'll add it in there. But I, there, there's no issue with us adding a walkway. We have the, logistically, um, we, we have the, the room to do that, and it, it wouldn't be an issue. And we could certainly run it around the, um, the backside of the, the building, away from South Street, over towards the existing building. There's, there's plenty of room for it there.
Oh, go in the other, opposite direction, so you could just-
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, just, yeah, go up-
Oh, instead of-
Go north towards, um, towards Wayland Street, go across the northerly side of the new building, and then, you know, connect in between the two buildings, that wouldn't be an issue at all.
That's what I assumed you would do anyway.
Yeah.
Because there's no room in the front.
Yeah, because then the, otherwise, you'd, you'd be, you know, there's, exactly, there's no room on, on the subject property.
We're creating more pavement against pavement, which you want that buffer, so.
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, what else there? Oh, you go back to the la-, go back to the photographs, and then the landscaping plan? I just want to go over-
Which one do you want?
So there's, okay, so there, you're proposing, I guess, to put some shrubs on the end over there for your landscaping plan.
This is looking towards South Street from-
Yeah, so you'd be looking at the top of the, uh, new one of this building.
All right, so we'd be, we'd be, we'd be adding some shrubs to the top of that, that proposed wall there. Just to, you know, break up that from this view. You'd see the roof essentially, um, of the new building, so we thought with some, you know, with some shrubs there, you'll be softening that from this, from the upper side as well. Because, yes, South Street side has, you know, arguably the most impact, but you still have some from the Wayland Street side.
Mm-hmm.
So I just wanted to go over, like, so here's the paved sides, and then if we bring up the landscaping plan.
Okay.
Because there's a lot of pavement in the back that you actually, so wherever it is green, you're going to have green?
That's correct, or is green today.
Or is green today.
So that-
It's not, basically not impervious.
Yep.
Unless we were to put a walkway around the-
Maybe you can put some retroreflective tape around the telephone pole or something like that, just to make it so.
So then, Greg, that leads me to this question. You have, so this area would-
Which that's-
Which, which you have paving, and then, hold on, and then let me pull up. See, see if I can do this, hold on. Ah. So then, so you have this area right here where you have things, and then we have-
That's in that riprap area.
So, so-
We'd be taking that out and landscaping.
Is the plan to cut this out and actually do mulch bed and-
Yeah, we'd be landscaping, adding a landscaping bed in there.
Okay.
And then you're going to actually do some landscaping on the other opposite side, that's kind of-
And then, yeah, the, you know, sort of where you're taking the picture, to the left.
Yep.
On the-
Behind the dumpster.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, uh, well, that's just, we, we colored that green, but it's, it's sort of-
So it's staying like that?
It's just, we, we're not proposing anything.
It's all riprap.
Any change there.
You know, spruce it up a little bit.
Well-
Dead material.
Well, the problem is, it's all riprap, so.
We have weeds in it, so it's either keep it, keep it neat.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
One way or the other.
I mean, they could clean up the riprap, do some, you know, weed whacking and make it look more presentable.
Yep.
I mean, we were trying to strike a balance between adding, um, adding enough landscaping that would, you know, that would make-
We just want to be all clear on the expectations when we say it's done by the site plan, and, and it looks like it's done by-
Understood, understood.
What's proposed to-
So we didn't, we didn't propose to change anything in that island, uh, on the, as you're going up the ramp. We didn't propose anything on the left, between the building and the ramp.
Okay.
Um, but we did propose to, to do some modifications, which will, will take some doing, um, on the right-hand side there, to take off some of the, yeah, right in there.
And then going down towards South Street, there's, I think there's a, um, a hill of riprap there now, so I see it's all-
That's right, so that would be part of, partially removed, and we'd be landscaping, oh, the other side.
Going the other way, on the back.
Over there, yeah, so we'd be adding some on that rip, yeah, in the rip, in the riprap behind the pole.
Yep, behind the pole, yeah, so there's, there's some trees there now, which, you know, it's nice to have the, have trees. It's right across from another residence.
So we'd be trying to soften that slope a little bit and vegetate it.
Right.
Yep.
Yep.
Ground cover stuff.
Yeah. Some shrubs.
Okay, some shrubs. That sounds good.
Holly, dogwood.
All right, this is a, do we have any more board questions, or open it up to the public? All right, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the, in attendance that would like to speak on this matter, and/or virtually, you can use the raise your hand function virtually.
Uh, we have no one virtually, other than board members.
Okay. At that, do you want, any DPW comments?
Yes, um, yes. So we'll start with Ryan. So.
I didn't see those.
Yeah, they were last, they were in the packet for last month.
Yeah?
Um, yeah, so, um, it says, "When applying for building permit, engineering will need to review the proposed locations of roof drains and our flu drain, floor drains on the utility site plan. If applicable, new sewer floor drain connections will require a sewer connection permit to be applied for with the building permit. If applicable, new sewer connection fees must be paid prior to engineering sign-off on your building permit." Um, and that's it for that one, so those are pretty straightforward. Um, obviously, they want to see, um, the, the, the stuff on the utility connection plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, let me see what I have here. These are, these are, um, Jeff Hellman's. Um, "Please provide a copy of this plan for review. Would the applicant consider CCTV inspection of the 10-inch clay pipe between DMHs for defects?" I assume you know what that means, because I have no clue.
Closed circuit, video inspection.
No, I meant the DMHs and-
Oh, drain manhole.
Okay, for a 10-inch clay pipe, so, um, additionally, depending on the inspection, would the applicant replace the 10-inch clay pipe with a 12-inch SDR 35 pipe? 10-inch clay is a restriction point with the additional upstream storm water devices and use of 12-inch diameter pipe.
Oh, I see what he's talking about, yeah. Uh, well, we'd obviously rather not work in the, so the, the pipe he's talking about is in the middle of South Street, going across the street between, um, a man, two manholes, one on either side of, of South Street, it looks to me.
Does it show on this plan right here?
It does, if you pan over to the right. Uh, actually, it's on, um, the grading and drainage plan, it's on the, the sheet, C4.
Let me zoom out a little bit. Oh, grading and, is grading and drainage on this one?
It's on that one right there, yep.
Oh, it's on this one?
Yeah, right, right there. Um, if you go to the-
Oh, I see 10-inch clay right here.
Yeah, right there, I think that must be the one he's referring to, so.
That says 8-inch clay here.
Uh, I think the way I'll answer that question is if the applicant's required to do, to change the, the, that'll, that'll be quite costly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the applicant would certainly prefer, uh, not to do that, but if the DPW is going to require it, I, I think we would, uh, you know, we would certainly, uh, accept it, but reluctantly, quite frankly.
Mm-hmm, it's understandable. Um, I don't know how much that's going to rise to a special permit condition for us. I don't feel comfortable requiring something that is, benefits a neighborhood for a property that's doing a byright, oh, not a byright use, but a use that would be byright, had to be attached, and it's only slightly detached, so I don't know how you feel, Paul, but I would say that if they end up negotiating to do it with the city out of good faith, then fine, but I don't know that we require-
Just say you follow the DPW requirements, because if it depends if it's going, they're going to require it, then-
Right.
I mean, it's also to the benefit of the project as well, and it's a clay pipe, so who's going to replace the clay pipe in the next 50 years?
Mm-hmm. Can't say I disagree with you, but I'd-
But maybe minimally, at least, you, as you, they mentioned CCTV, but, you know, as we read it, it didn't, it's, it seems like this opened for some further discussion with DPW.
Yeah.
That we're just reading what, what the comment was at this time, so that you're aware of it, so that you can have a discussion with them on-
Understood.
How to, if there's an alternative to this.
Yep, understood, yeah, I mean, we certainly have, have to satisfy the DPW anyways, I'm sure, that'll be the condition, so.
Okay. That was, those are all the comments.
Okay. Any other for, board discussion on the matter? Okay, so board have enough information?
Public comment.
I did the public comment.
Oh, we did, okay, that's right.
I tend this time.
That's true, that's true. No one said anything.
No.
Uh, make a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion has been made to close the hearing with a-
Second.
Second. Roll call vote, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose. Amanda?
Aye.
Allyn?
Nope.
Alex? Paul?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye, all right, discussion?
Did you say Alex's name, because you skipped to Allyn to me?
He did, I did.
Alex said, Alex said, Alex said aye, but I don't know if you said his name.
Did I say aye, I saw you said Alex.
I don't know, whatever.
And then you, yeah.
I think you went from Allyn to me, that's why I, but anyway.
Alex said aye, again.
Yeah, it's, it doesn't matter.
Good.
Um, I was going to do permit conditions, but we can do them now, if you want. Um, we talked about all them, but basically, um, um, uh, some sort of decorative, non-galvanized steel chain link fence on the, the retaining wall, uh, screening around, vinyl, um, enclosure around the dumpster area. Um, no, um, glaring lights facing the residential buildings, all dark sky compliant, and, you know, no, no lighting issues off the building. Um, and then just what I had said, the building is to be utilized by tenants on site, as well as the Amico Flooring property owner.
And if there's going to be, um, doors to the rear to connect the doors with, with a walkway around the building.
Sure. And then it's just our normal, we have our normal subject to, you know, department review and all that stuff, so.
Yeah, and we, we said grasses in the, facing South Street and not landscape, landscaping per plan.
Good.
Was there anything else? Capture everything, everybody? Add lighting? Close dumpster, grass, it's retaining wall fence, no? And anybody have anything else to add to the, no, conditions? Okay, yep, and right, DPW.
Thanks, Greg. Are you here for anything else tonight?
I am, but-
What are you here for?
Uh, uh, Butler.
Well, look-
I was just curious, I was just curious, it wasn't, I wasn't saying anything.
Let's, and then, so we've got everything here, would anybody like to make a motion?
We already did, and we already voted on it.
Oh, with that, we didn't vote on it yet. We just laid out the conditions.
That was the close.
Oh, that was the close.
Yeah, that was the here.
Make a motion to approve, I'm, I'm way off tonight.
Yeah?
Make a motion to approve the site plan review, subject to the conditions as mentioned.
All right.
For Amico Flooring.
Motion's been made with a second. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose. Amanda?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye.
Thanks a lot.
All right, we've got that.
Okay. All right, refocus, let's see what we got here.
Okay, oh, that one's going to take a while.
I'm sure.
I know.
I'm sure. All right.
We have special permit and site plan review, AG Dreamflip, proposing to build a multifamily PUD consisting of nine units, a single family, and four duplex buildings on the site located at Zero Fairmont Street. In the RB district.
Chris, would you like just the site plan up on the screen?
I believe we sent over a rendering, it's a couple-
Yes, I have renderings, yep.
Yeah, you mind pulling that one up?
Yep.
I'll say this is like the third iteration or so at this location.
It's more than that, I think, I remember this property often.
That was before me, so.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
All right.
Is this screen okay, starting right here?
Um, let's go to the second sheet real quick.
How about right there? Trying to zoom in far enough where everyone can see what we're dealing with.
Yep, oh, perfect.
Okay.
All right. Uh, for the record, Chris Anderson with Handing and Engineering here behalf of AG Dreamflip LLC for the construction of a PUD off of Fairmont Street. Uh, just to orientate ourselves here on the page, we have Fairmont Street that runs along the bottom side. Um, the property is located on the northerly side of the roadway, um, and along the opposite side of the rear property line is the Boston and Ma- Main Railroad, and on the other side of that is the Nashville River, so, uh, just to orientate ourselves here. Um, it's the intent of the applicant to construct, uh, three duplex units, uh, with two bed, or three bedrooms in each unit for a total of six units. Um, currently, the property is undeveloped, it's primarily woodland with extensive wetland located throughout the entire site, um, as was previously inferred. Um, the project has been around for quite a while. Uh, most recently, the permitting was completed in 2009, uh, and that was for a total of 18 residential units. Um, obviously, 2009 occurred, and the economic conditions were not the greatest, uh, so the project effectively languished, uh, for that time. Um, but it's the intent of the applicant to revamp the project in compliance with the current regulations and ordinances. in compliance with the current regulations and ordinances. So it's the intent upon favorable action by both this board as well as the Conservation Commission to consolidate the lots into three individual properties. Lot one would be a single-family home, and lot two would be a single duplex which are allowed by right per zoning ordinance. With the third lot would being the actual PUD itself, which would have the three duplex structures on it as well. Access to the site will be provided by a new paved driveway, which will extend and do a hard ninety going into the slope, if you will. This will provide access to the three buildings themselves. Based on the zoning requirements, we're required to have twelve parking spaces on the property. We have a bank of six parking stalls opposite the middle structure that face Fairmount Street. The furthest setback, building itself will have two additional spots immediately in front of a garage, so there will be a garage space. And the opposite, or the first building as you come in would have two spaces immediately adjacent. So we're required to have twelve spaces, we're providing twelve surface spaces, plus each individual unit has its own garage space, so effectively eighteen spaces in all. So there's quite a bit of parking on the site itself. Stormwater will be accommodated with new catch basins and water quality units to capture and treat the runoff. That'll discharge to an underground storage system located under the parking area, and that will then discharge to a small detention basin in the back portion of the site before it ultimately reaches the wetland area itself. Sewer will be provided by a new sewer main that extends into the property with individual laterals going to the buildings, and this water will again be serviced by a new water main that will extend in with individual laterals for the units. We are providing some information relative to the landscaping. In general, the site will be loamed and seeded, with a noted exception along the back slope against the wetland. That would be riprap for stabilization and to minimize impacts upon the wetland. We're proposing to plant a series of deciduous trees immediately in front of that six park, parking spot bay, if you will. Yep, right there. That would also be infilled with evergreen shrubs and lower grow with plant, effectively just to help buffer the cars facing the road from the actual roadway itself. Like I said before, everything else will be loamed and seeded with small landscape beds kind of interspersed around the site.
Although, just, those cars will be quite a bit below the street, right?
They'll be about four, I believe.
I was just looking at your top lines, it looks like almost eight feet. Fifty-six is right there.
Correct, yeah.
Fifty, forty-eight is at the toe of the parking.
Is there any fill planned for this location?
There will be fill brought into the site, correct.
Because I was like, we'll take a look at the photographs of what it looks like presently, because it's really low. The only one where it's raised up is where the single-family house is being proposed, which looks like it's just a fill spot. So I guess a concern about whether or not that's even stable enough for of structure. Because it just looks like it's been filled in over, just filled some fill over time.
Yep, so the actual development site for this would require quite a bit of fill, no doubt about that. It would be compatible and brought into geotechnical standards to make sure that it is properly stabilized for long term, to make sure there's no settling or slope failures as part of construction. We are placing riprap along the backside of the road to help armor it as well.
Where's the hundred-year flood in plus for this? Because I mean, this is, this area is like wet.
It is very wet.
So that you really, you know, I'm just thinking, you know, overall, the appropriateness of actually putting a structure downhill in these locations.
So.
I know that's what you're, that's what you're consigned to do, so, at this point in time. So I'm putting that out there about feasibility. And, okay.
I do know that, and it's funny, because we had talked about this, I don't know, a month ago, month or so ago, and I didn't take pictures when I was down there, but the closer you get to Depot, obviously there's a brook there, it's very wet. I almost took pictures because it was almost like a river at that point, three weeks or a month ago. It's subsided now, it's still a running brook, but it's not as bad. I suppose the further you get up the slope, the further you get up towards Triangle Ave, the more quote-unquote upwind you have, but that, I mean, a lot of that's gonna be the CONCOM's doing then.
So, I guess, maybe you bring up some of the photographs so everybody can see we're talking about the area. But first of all, I don't think myself, it meets the definition of a PUD, okay? Number one. In this case, it's not comprehensive planned unit development. There's a single family and two family in its own lot, and this is just looking like trying to put two other multifamilies just to try to put them on a lot there, where, yeah. So this, this location here, next to the structure on the right, you're planning to put the first one on the right-hand side towards the rear.
Yeah, this is the right-hand boundary of the lot.
So that elevation difference is like huge.
This is still the right-hand boundary of the lot, kind of closer to, I suppose this would probably be facing the middle of the duplexes. Your, your, the property boundary's up here on the right, up near my cursor. But it's fine, you don't, we don't need to, but either way.
I think it's going down the street, on the photo.
Yeah, 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 it is, and then this is facing more, this is the outcropping. And I'm sure, see the pump station there, that kind of gives you some idea of how far up you are. And then as you get further down, this is facing the slope on the Abutter's property, so you're, this is the far side of the property here. Some runoff, it looks like.
So that's like, just how strong the runoff is, there's like whole trap rock and everything down the hill on that embankment.
Yeah, there's, I saw.
Right there, so that's the continuation of it going down. So I guess another question would be, is that pump house gonna be removed? It's gonna be on, now just on a single-family house lot?
Is that?
What is that structure?
Using, is that being used by anyone or anything?
I am not certain, but that's located on the opposite side of the wetland, and we're not touching anything on that side, so.
So that's accessed by the roadway, that's another point, along Depot Street, where, where it's kind of like, you know, this is being left to either vagrancy. We'd like to see that remedied, that should be removed if it's no longer it's gonna be the responsibility of a single-family homeowner.
I mean, if it's abandoned, it's gotta come down. If it's abandoned, it's gotta come down. It can't, it can't stay, you can't have a vacant structure near these new construction houses.
So we'll look into that, I am not aware of what function that has at this point in time, so.
I was telling, I was telling Paula, I found a.
Keep going left.
I found, hold on one second, I found a plan from nineteen seventy-one that shows the brook and the pump house on it. This is a recorded plan that was in the registry. It's got the old coal shed, which isn't there anymore, it's down near Depot Street. And then it shows the pump house, and it says pump house and a well location in the pump house. And then it's, it has the brook and a ditch. But it looks, it also looks like, and this is something you probably have to vet out with DPW, it looks like either the property owner did this, or the city did at one point, I don't know, but all this riprap seems to channel water off the street onto your site?
Correct, yes.
So you, you know that's there, and you're gonna mitigate that in your stormwater?
So it's a current condition that the city or whoever once upon a time put that in. So it's intent to keep that intact. I know there's a couple break points along the property. One of which is something that the duplex structure is gonna be kind of rectifying a little bit to redirect the water, because there's a pipe that comes from across the street, dumps it right into the property. So that's gonna be reviewed with CONCOM as well as with DPW when that time comes to redirect that pipe and provide more riprap and more of a plunge-pull feature, if you will, to get out there.
Just an overall comment from DPW about right along the street frontage of Fairmount Street to do something to help channel the water, so.
Yep, so.
Even though it's an existing condition, it needs to be addressed.
Yes, and we just got DPW comments this morning, so obviously, speaking to the comment relative to the PUD, that was a last-minute change unfortunately, that was done without my acknowledgement. But the site was originally intended to be a multifamily development, so obviously at the discretion of the board, we are more than happy to effectively change the nomenclature of the special permit to be from a PUD to a multifamily, which would fall more in line with what the development actually is, so.
And that kind of, before, Paul, before you get to this section of the site, I just wanna stay on that topic for a second. My original thought, and you could probably, there's probably a reason why, my original thought is, why don't you create an A&R for the house and the two-family, subdivide those off, and then do just a multifamily approval for this?
That's exactly how we're intending on doing it. Lot number one and two
Okay.
will be their own entities, they are.
Because if that's the case, you don't need to include them in this approval, because we'll have separate A&Rs, because they're allowed by right.
Correct, those, those two lots are not included within this original submitted.
Okay, so it's only the three duplexes that we're talking about?
And I still wanted to just bring about the issues, because we've had prior site approvals for this, what the issues are, so that, still with the property owner, we just wanna bring about, like, these things still should be addressed. So if you wanna go down to the other end, it's like the fence on Depot Street, just, that has to be taken care of.
Yeah, so this is the brook that runs down, there's a drainage ditch there, but the first, the first thing that, I took a picture of it today too, is this fence, did you take one from the other side?
No, the street side.
Oh, okay, the fence from, when you're standing, I have it on mine. When you're standing on Depot on this side, this whole fence needs to come down or be replaced or something. It's in terrible condition.
So there's a gate right before the bridge, and so there's a paved area to the right over there.
Hold on, I'm trying to.
Right there, yeah. So, and that's another point too, I wanted to bring up, that also debris should be removed from the site. Again, that's gonna be part of the single-family lot, so.
Almost looks like the railroad dumped that on your site.
But there's all this debris that's there, and that is, that would be accessed by that gate we're just talking about, fenced area. So you have this area where people could come in and out and do dumping and stuff on that side on the property. So that needs to be secured. Should be.
The fence was a primary concern to me, in that you want it as open as possible, you don't want areas that are screened off, that people can, you know, go behind, hide, whatever. The vegetation of itself, I mean, it can grow, it's been growing in for years, it's not a big deal. But I think the fence needs to come down at the very least, and I agree with Paul, you see these, you know, there's no reason for that material to be there.
Is that World War I marker still there?
It is, so there's, there's a notification in one of the DPW comments that there's a marker on site that needs to be preserved. Do you know where it is?
I, first time I'm ever hearing of this this morning, so.
I remember Mike Hurley, I think, bringing that up. Was this the site years ago, yeah?
I think so.
And, yeah, I think you're right, and, and I don't, I don't know specifically where it is, but apparently the DPW does, so.
Yep, so obviously we're gonna be talking with DPW extensively. Relative to this, we can review it, it's definitely gonna be more of a concern to conservation, because it is within definitely their jurisdiction. I don't foresee an issue with taking down the fence, opening that area up, so at least visually more obvious, for lack of a better term.
Well, I'm not sure about just taking it down, you might have to put something back up, but it's in poor repair, so something needs to be done.
I don't think you want a fence there, I don't, I think you want it open.
Yes and no, it's just gonna be a dumping ground, that's what it's gonna be.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying, it's gonna just attract dump, people dumping mattresses or whatever else over there, because there's gonna be this little side thing, they're gonna runoff and.
There is, there is a quasi-paved area there.
Yep, so.
And then the homeowner's not even close to see what's going on for that.
So an option might also be extensive landscaping, making it more, right now, as you, seeing it now in a picture like this, obviously it's very inviting for people to drop their stuff there.
Yes.
Removing the fence, removing the gate, reverting it back to a natural state might be the more beneficial object, or goal, if you will, than putting up another fence, because another fence will just kind of deter itself.
Yep, that's, that's, that's fine, it was just kind of like the area where it's kind of like, where people could go in to dump, you just don't want them to, that being, you want to be either plantings or something there to be a deterrent.
Or even, even mounded soil.
Doesn't have to be a gate, can be something else, but.
Like, like, like mounded soil with some minor plantings around it, so that people can't back in there and dump stuff, it's something. I'm sure you can come up with some sort of solution, but like I said, the, it's funny because I was looking at.
Take care of the pump house piece though first, because you probably have to use that as the access point to deal with that scenario.
I was looking at the minutes from when we approved, so for, a little background for the board members that weren't here and for the public, that this was previously an industrial zone. When we redid our zoning, we changed it back to RB. So when we approved it in two thousand eight, September of oh eight, it was a planned unit development in the, in an industrial zoning district. They were kind of like individual lots, but they were all gonna be privately owned, private trash collection, private whatever. There were some, back then there were concerns about drainage.
It was still like a development, there was still gonna be like HOA, whichever.
Yep. There was a neighbor that had a concern about removing vegetation from the site, noise and visual buffer.
About the fence.
Right, so the fence wasn't on here, but we had multiple meetings, I only think one of them.
Follow-up.
Our prior, our prior head of community development, well, two or three ago, asked about street cheese, which ones are going, which ones are being kept. I assume that's all on the plan, I'm not particularly worried about that. The concern then was that some of the trees along the frontage are within the right-of-way, and there should be, care should be taken if you take down trees within the right-of-way, that you should run it by the DPW first. Yeah, aesthetic fencing along Depot Street was a permit condition back in, in two thousand nine, two thousand eight. Catch basin agreement, don't know what that is, it's not in our minutes. Escort from maintenance of, oh, catch basin and drain system, so stormwater, you know, O&amp;M plans, which we're gonna, part of that's gonna be what we're gonna be requiring. So.
Could you bring up back there a layout for the PUD?
Yes.
Of the multifamily? Okay, I still question, I'm questioning the density and the location of the third building on the right, because it's like stuffed in on the side. And also the first building, you get the side of the building facing Fairmount Street instead of the front of the building, which should be facing Fairmount Street and not on the side.
Do you think, Chris, do you think?
I think it should be almost more appropriate that you remove one of the buildings and you split it further, and if you need an access point, you do a common driveway between the two, so you've just got still two duplexes. Either you switch its own driveway or a shared driveway, if that's, that makes the access better.
Do you think when you, before the next meeting, you could just show the approximate location of this Abutter, the dwelling? Just so we can get a feel for how close, I know there's a grade difference, but just so we can get a feel for how close they are. If they're not here now, they might be here at the next meeting, it's probably, you know, the one to know how close the buildings are to them.
Yeah, that's one of the things that would kind of jumped out at me, was that proximity to the Abutter there, and how further back off the road that it actually is in that regard too. But also with the challenges of the site, and even the front building still not, kind of not fronting on it, and since really not a PUD per se is like being like a, you know, complex, that it should just meld in better with the neighborhood.
We can, we can evaluate, trying to shift things around. I know that the wetland obviously was a major concern, because it does encroach, if you will, between, or encroaches a little bit further upwind near building number three, the first one as you come in on the driveway. But we can take a look at that and see if there's any potential.
Pull them back towards the roadway instead of towards into the.
I think part of.
What area?
I think part of it too is, you know, obviously there's a grade difference there, but it'll be interesting to see how close that house is, because that plays into it. But they, they do exceed the required setbacks in RB, which for an A&R lot are fifteen feet.
Only fifteen feet.
Yeah, right, but that's, right, but that's required, so if you built a duplex on that lot, you could have it in that location in RB by right, if you got rid of everything else. So my point was, it does meet the minimum setbacks in RB, while I, while I certainly understand what you're saying.
It's almost like if you remove the one on the right and you turn the direction of the one on the left, then you've got two lots, two structures right there. You don't need any multifamily, it's by right with your two duplexes. And then you would just need, if you're looking for a common driveway, you just do a special permit for a common driveway if that was necessary.
Yep, the other concern we had, we originally looked at trying to do just all duplexes, similar fashion to what was originally approved, but slightly different. But what we're trying to also avoid is a lot of curb cuts along the road. So that's another component that we'll take a look at, but it's noted. The board's concerned, so we can take a look and see what we can do.
And that's my opinion, if anybody else has any other thoughts on, on the proposal at this time.
I'm just pulling up the GIS so I can get an idea for how close this, this property is to the lot, here we go.
I know taking it, doing it by right then takes it out of our jurisdiction, so to speak, this'll be subject to CONCOM, but it's trying to put more housing on. I don't think it's an ideal building location, so.
This neighboring property looks about twenty, twenty-seven feet to the property line from, from the closest point, and that's only one corner. It gets, obviously it gets further as you go to the front. So it's twenty-seven feet, so then you're talking another almost twenty feet. It's about forty, between forty-five to fifty feet from building to building.
True, but you've got the two lots right there, where you've got one on the left, one on the right, doesn't have to be as close to the other side or intrusive into the wetland area. Particularly if you're gonna put fill.
I mean, yeah, there's a little more flexibility now that it's RB, because obviously it wasn't, when it was in the industrial zone, it was, the only, the only thing you could do is plan your development at that point, if you wanted to do it this way. So now there's at least a little more flexibility to try and, you know, to get multifamily in there somehow. But I think whatever happens, that pump station's a particular concern to me, that it's, you know, whether it be vagrants or just, just the looks of it, it shouldn't be there unless it's in use for something. If it is in use, I don't know if it's tied to the Moncho property, but I suggest contacting the Cunningham's, the property owners. They're in the middle of working on developing that site, they might have access to or interest in taking care of that if it services their site at all. So, something to think about.
Any board member have any, you want to, any thoughts?
I have one minor, minor thought on your elevations. Whenever an elevation is submitted to the board, one of my main focus points is the front entrance door. And especially with new construction, I noticed that on your plans, there's an overhang over the entire front of the buildings. And I'm wondering if that's sufficient to protect the front entrance door against, you know, driving rains and driving snow that are always present in New England. And I'm kind of wondering why on a brand-new plan and brand-new construction, more protection wasn't offered to the two entrance doors.
I can't speak specifically to why it was done that way. I know they wanted a little tiny porch as they walked in, but I can approach the applicant with that comment and see if, what their specific mindset was when they came up with that, or chose that building layout.
I can see that, just with the plans that are submitted, with that overhang, it would be kind of easy to extend it over the doorways and protect the doorways quite a bit more. Or put some kind of a structure over the doorways, some kind of a framed structure that would, would do the job. But it's not a deal breaker, but it's something that I think that is kind of nice in this New England environment.
Oh, there's something there.
Yeah, it comes, I mean, it comes out about three feet, maybe?
Yeah, it's, it's a very shallow eyeing.
Can you pull that up, Paul, that right there, is that?
Zoom in then.
It was kind of an overhang across the whole front.
Well, I was looking at the side, the side.
Right, right here is what you're looking at?
So that's one, and then if you want, scroll down a little bit, and then to the left, there's another elevation to the left.
Yeah, this is the opposite side, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, seems to be pretty de minimis. Picking to Peter's point, it's like, we'll bring, if you could bring that up with them. Also, if you, if you did any type of posts or anything like that, there would be like composite, not a wood post, per se, off, when you're doing your composite siding. It'd look more than just four-by-fours. Unfinished work.
And if you want me to read department comment, I will, but I know that Chris said he has them. So unless there's something you want to talk about specifically?
I don't think so at this point in time. Like I said before, we have to go in for a conservation, so we're fully expecting a continuance tonight. Because as we noted earlier, there's a lot of wetland on the site. It's very wet. So there's a plethora of issues that we need to address with the Conservation Commission. We want to come forward with the board tonight, get the initial feedback, any comments or concerns from the public, so that we can address them all in one comprehensive plan set, so that everybody's on the same page and we can move forward with.
If, if by next meeting you can give us an idea for how much fill, not just in cubic yards, but how, how many feet you have to fill? That's usually easier to, you know, a five-hundred-foot section, two feet high, something like that. It's usually easier than saying how many cubic yards you bring in. That, that would be helpful. You know, I for one, I, I certainly, it's, the, the overall concept is very much in keeping with that neighborhood. I don't particularly have a problem with the, the, the units, the spacing, the layout. I know Paula obviously had her concerns and I understand them. I think just, you know, for me, if, if we tweak things a little bit and particularly make that site look more presentable with the pump station, the fence, landscaping, I think that's where my mind's at on those.
Does any board member have any comments or feedback?
I agree with Paul. It just, I mean, cleaning up that site, I mean, something there is gonna, you know, make that look so much.
And I think Conservation will be definitely harping on that because that is definitely within their jurisdiction. So it's noted and we'll take a look at that and try to incorporate that into.
Are you, are you already on a CONCOM agenda?
We'll be submitting tomorrow.
Okay.
And I'm, and I'm requesting a reduction in units and the facing direction of the other housing unit. That was my comment. Just, that's mine. I'm not sure if any other board member agrees with that, but.
I, I think, I mean, I like the way it is personally, but.
I have no problem with, with the density. Aside from the initial comments that Paula had about the concerns about fill and wa, and obviously, like I said, CONCOM's gonna have a big part of this with, you know, how, I don't even know how close you are to wetlands or how close you are to that brook in particular, which I hopefully, I think is a little further down. But, you know, I, I think that.
So I will double check, but I don't believe that's an actual quote-unquote brook. It's just an intermittent channel.
That 1971 plan references it as a brook.
Yes.
And did you see the outfall in the photographs? There's, there's a pretty good, it's a stream.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this, this plan specifically is a brook and it has run-of-flow and it has a ditch location and, but anyway, that is not our purview, so that, that's fine. I, I think that, you know, we, we have some bigger issues to tackle first and then we can get into, you know. We did approve eighteen units there before, although looking at the site now, I have no idea what has changed from 2008 to now, but I can't even imagine that it was feasible back then, given where the building locations were shown, but.
So the wetland did grow significantly between 2009 and last year.
Yeah, it had to.
Oh, I believe that.
Yeah, so that's the primary component of what changed the overall plan, including reducing the unit counts and everything like that, was, one, the city didn't have the, the wetland ordinance at that point in time. So it was predating that and now the current wetland ordinance is a lot more restrictive. And so a lot of that played into coming up with the plan that you see today. So there's.
I did have one question about the property owner, and you might not know the answer to this, but I'll ask it anyway. Maybe you can answer it next time. They've owned it for a couple of years now, almost three years now, I think, two years now, sorry, 2002, 2022. They, there's a for-sale sign on the property now. It's there today. I saw it when I took pictures today.
Yeah, indeed.
I didn't look at MLS to see if it's listed, which shame on me, that's what I do for a living. But I, I'm curious if it's an old sign, if it is, remove it, or if it's a new sign, if it's marketing the development or marketing the units.
I'll double check, but it's my understanding that he has no intent on selling it anytime soon.
Now, I'm just gonna ask, Alex or Lynn, do you have any thoughts or?
Not for me at this time.
Same. Every issue I had has been addressed.
Okay. And this is a public hearing, so if there's anybody here that'd like to speak on the matter, present. And then anybody in our virtual world, if they will use their, raise the hand function.
Just board members.
There's, there's a ten-
Oh, there is someone on there?
No, but nobody has their hand raised, but there is attendees. There's seven.
Did I not look at them? I apologize.
I have them up, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Tracy. I see them now. I apologize for those that are here. If there's something that you want to speak on, as it comes up, make sure you use the raise your hand function.
Oh, David King has his hand raised.
Yes.
There we go. That's the sign.
Yes, David.
Good evening. How is everybody tonight?
Great.
Perfect. I wanted to bring you up to speed that the property is under contract at this moment in time.
The entire parcel, all the parcels within, speaking here?
Yes. It's under contract with one company and that one company is going to build all of those develops, developments that has been presented to you.
That is different than the applicant in front of us?
Well, the applicant is the owner. That's Dreamflips.
Yep.
Okay, so Dreamflips is responsible to get it to, because that's the purchase-sale agreement we have with Dreamflips, is to get it to the final stage when it's approved, and once it's approved, then we're closing on it.
Oh, okay. Well, that, that might cause a problem then because the permits are tied to the applicant.
Yeah.
We'll review that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, this is first time hearing of this, so I will deal with that offline.
Okay, that's fine. We'll, we'll have the engineer look into that. Thank you, David.
Okay, thank you.
I look forward to seeing you after you go C-Cons-Com.
I, I did have, if you want, Paula, just because I have a better angle of it. This is the, this is, this is the fence from Depot Street. So, I mean, clearly not in good condition. It's a very poor condition. This, this is the, oh, well, apparently my photos don't want to load. The for-sale signs down here, so.
I mean, those houses would look very nice on the street.
Yeah, this, this is the close-up of the, of the pump house.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
Make a motion to continue unless there's anything else.
Second. A motion's been made with the second to continue. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say oppose. Row call. Amanda?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
We have before us this evening, site plan review. Ryan Butler proposes the use of mini warehouse and distribution facility, adding 2,000 square foot addition onto an existing building located at 222 Bemis Road in the industrial district. Good evening. Nice to see you again.
Good to see you all too. On the record, Greg Roy with Dulson Roy. I'm representing the applicant this evening. And we submitted a site plan, as you just read, for the construction of a 2,000-square-foot addition at the site, which is on Bemis Road. We did submit, I think just this, this afternoon, a few colored plans that I was hoping we could start with. If we could start with the one that has the ortho image.
Okay, bear with me one second.
Yeah, no problem.
Looking up that listing.
Understood.
Going on. All right. Ortho presentation plan, that one?
I think that's the one, yeah.
All right, let me just start sharing my screen.
Great, yeah.
Let me just move stuff over and go full screen.
Great, thank you very much. I thought I'd start with this, put together this plan, just so the board and the, the rest of the members of the public could, could understand where the site is because it sits off, frontage is on Bemis Road. It's, it's of course 222 Bemis Road, but the frontage and the building, while the frontage is on Bemis Road, the building sits behind. So it's, it's actually pretty difficult to see it if you're driving down Bemis Road. Not much of the existing building is visible and I don't think any of the proposed addition will be visible from the, from the proposed, excuse me, from the, from the road. So you can see Bemis Road. It's the, it's hard to read, but it's the blue letters that we have right there. The dark outline polygon is the limits of the property, rather oddly shaped property. The existing building, which is 3,500 square feet, is shown in yellow. And the proposed addition, which is 2,000 square feet, is shown in the, the red or the peach color there. I think now if we could, so I just, again, you can kind of see where that sits in with the, with the building that fronts on Bemis Road and the abutting, the other abutting properties surrounding it. I just wanted to kind of give the board a bird's-eye view so you can get it in context. I think there's another plan that's probably called the presentation, another colored presentation plan that we submitted today.
Reading drainage presentation plan?
Yes, thank you, yes. Yes. So just give you a brief overview here of what we're proposing specifically. We are proposing, again, the 2,000-square-foot addition, again, shown in peach. I'll call it peach-colored right there. Same width of the building, just extending it in length. The, the operation, by the way, is a warehouse facility. They're, the, the businesses in the, the prop, the owners in the business of wholesale distribution of fire protection equipment. So it's a, a supply house for that, in, supporting that industry. And it's just in need of expansion of the business, expansion of inventory space for the, for the operation of the business, which is why we're here. There's an existing paved area that comes out, you know, driveway that extends off of, off of Bemis Road. That area actually also extends south towards the adjacent building. It's not hatched in here, but it doesn't end where the property line is. We just shaded it so you could see the, the width of the proposed paving that we're proposing on the subject site. But in reality, the pavement extends down towards, yes, in that area there and, and even north of the existing building between the, the property line and the, and the drive, the building and the, and the driveway. So the pavement there is, is a little bit more expansive than it shows on, on this particular exhibit plan. Nonetheless, we are proposing to expand the paving, the paving there to the north. If you can see, we're proposing a new rounding where the dark green round section is right in there, yep. We're gonna add a little bit of pavement in there to improve the turning circulation and ensure that larger vehicles that would enter the site from the north side of a right-of-way that extends right in there, yep. They would be able to enter in and then, you know, negotiate a turn, not impacting the, the abutting property and parking areas off-site. So that we've, we're proposing to improve that, that width and to sort of ease that radius in that location for that purpose. And then on the northerly side of the existing building, on both sides of the access aisle, we're proposing the, the required parking right in there as, as is being shown. We have six parking spaces, which is, meets or exceeds, I can't remember, we may be exceeding what's, what's required by the, by the parking ordinance. There, of course, a handicapped van accessible space that we're adding with an accessible route into the front door. So that's an improvement over existing conditions. And then on the southerly side of the site, there's some utilities that we needed to accommodate, so we are proposing some, some relocations of a gas service as well as the incorporation of a, of a stormwater management system to collect the additional impervious area from the, from the new roof right in there, yes. So we would, we would collect and manage stormwater on-site. The bulk of the existing paving, pavement from the north of the proposed addition and the, and the existing roof would just continue draining as it does today. There's a existing catch basin, which is shown in blue, which is a little bit difficult to see, from my vantage point at least. But, but we intend to preserve the existing drainage patterns. We're not proposing any significant changes to the grade, grades really on any portions of the site. Really just a addition of and, and formalizing the parking areas in the, in the proposed 2,000-square-foot addition. I did want to address the filing package that you have along with the, the site plan application included a determination letter, zoning determination letter from, I think it was December, from the zoning enforcement officer, which at the time indicated that the proposed use was a contractor storage yard and was therefore sending us to the zoning board of appeals for a variance or special permit. I can't remember. We have, not sure exactly what got lost in the translation, but we, we've never been proposing a contractor storage use. It's a, the-
Building trade shop?
Yeah, it, it's a warehouse use that we're proposing, which is allowed by right. We had a discussion with the building commissioner a few weeks back and resolved that. And he's actually issued a subsequent letter, I think it was on the ninth of April, amending his, his previous determination. So we do not need any zoning relief on this. So that issue was corrected. So I think it was just a matter of misunderstanding of, of, I think, I think we had indicated in our form of intent that perhaps putting too much emphasis on the storage aspect to this, and it's not, it's storage in virtue of the fact that we're a supply house and we just need more inventory space.
Not exterior storage.
That's right. We're not, we're not proposing any equipment storage, outdoor storage. It's all inside space.
And then where's the dumpster?
That's a great question. We do not have, it's shown existing or proposed on the site, so I do notice that. I do note that, so.
Maybe they don't have one, but if they, I guess we would condition it that they'd have to put something like where you, you would put it if they had, if they have one, but to.
I also have to apologize. I wasn't the engineer that, that did, I, I did review and stamp this, but I wasn't.
It's in the narrative. It says a dumpster's provided and it's on the site plan, but I couldn't find it at least.
I don't think we show one on the existing conditions plan either, so. We will have to, we'll have to review that with the applicant. I think we have places we can accommodate. It probably would go to the north of the, the parking bay. The, the three parking spaces on the side where the handicap spaces are, that would probably make the most sense. You could come in and grab the, on a front-load orientation, grab the dumpster, unload it and then, you know, travel through the site. I don't think it'd be an issue. We're finding a spot for it.
This is the G-
So it says number three, pretty much of when-
Right, just north of it, we'd say number three.
This is the GIS. It looks like it might be right here right now, which is where the new building's going.
Could be. I don't, we don't show it on our existing conditions plan and typically we would if it was on, on site when we.
I mean, if it's to the south, it's also not visible to the public.
Right, right. Yeah, you can, I mean, you can find a location for it, I'm sure.
Really, there's not much of it. You can see the north portion of the building, but you can't really see. We're gonna open that up a little bit to the north, but I don't think you're gonna see much of the.
Yeah, the actual video is people speaking right now because there was nothing else to pull up. Do you want something on the screen?
Oh, okay.
I stopped because I watched enough of these afterwards that eventually you want to see people talk, so I just took it off the screen.
So anyway, that's all. I, I, I wanted to be brief and I'm having to take a minute.
What is the, what is the current use in the building? What do they, what do they do?
It's fire supply protect-
Oh, it still is?
Yeah, yeah, it's, that's existing today. They, they supply fire protection equipment and they're, no changes proposed to that. They're just expanding the operation. Just need more.
Many a year ago, and I don't know if you saw, my, my family used to own that building.
Oh, no kidding?
And my father sold it in ninety-five. So we actually, we used to, it used to be, it used to be construction storage for our construction company.
Okay.
So spent, spent quite a bit of time in that building back in the day.
Interesting. Small world.
Then it was signs.
Okay.
Yep.
Now fire protection equipment.
Yep. What was it before? After your father?
This is a sign company.
Yeah, sign company.
Who's want that, right?
No.
I don't, I don't think so. I think it was a-
It was owned by Bud Koodoo.
They did screening, right? Like sign screening?
Well, for like vehicles and signs and like that.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Yep.
Building before that, the gas company.
Yep.
And then your parents owned it before then?
After. They bought it from them. Preco. I'm looking at the transfer history right now, yeah. Nineteen, nineteen eighty-eight, my father bought it and then ninety-five they sold it.
Have any DPW comments?
Let's see.
Paul's looking that up. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Public hearing, and then I'll ask Paul to take a look at attendees, if there's anybody raising their hand virtually?
I can't see.
Nobody?
All right, let me go into comments here.
There's somebody over here. Good, we got to split these duties up over here. Oh, great. Can you come up to the podium, please? Thank you.
Yeah, I did, yep.
Hi, my name is Carol Mallett. I live at 224 Bemis Road.
Is that the house right in front of it?
Right.
Uh-huh.
I was wondering if anything was going to be done with the drainage in the parking lot, if it was going to affect my property?
We can ask that question?
Because their parking lot floods every time it rains.
So-
Okay.
Every time it rains.
We have some good news for you, Greg.
We are, we are planning to, to improve it, but, but in the interest of transparency, as I mentioned, most of our improvements are going to be on the southern portion of the site. So, oh, I see, Mallett, so that's your, you're right here?
Yep.
Okay. So where does the flooding occur, right?
It occurs right here.
Right in there.
And it goes right up to their door.
Okay, okay.
So I was just wondering if you're going to be tying this?
No, we're, we're adding a little bit of space here for some parking.
Yeah.
The intention of that's going to run back down. We are intending to use this, though, so this is great information. If that's, if that's so overloaded, yeah. Okay, okay, well, that's good information. That probably just, probably needs to be cleaned.
Yeah, it's got a drain in the middle of the parking-
That, that's it right there, I think, yeah.
Yeah, but it floods out every single time it rains.
Okay, yeah, that's good. Of course, we get, we're getting historic epic floods now.
Yeah, right.
It's been going on for years.
For years, yeah.
Years and years, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, we were just wondering.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Sounds like we have an ONM maintenance on the existing infrastructure.
Is it time for people to talk?
Well, yes, I, I did ask, yes, I did ask the question.
Oh.
No, that's okay, please, so-
Please stand up, because we need the microphone.
Yeah, please, yeah, no, no. Yeah, stand up.
I own, at the end of Bemis Road, I own the property at the end of the road.
Are you 228?
248. She's 228. It used to-
224? 228's the one.
Mine's 248, but it used to be, they changed it years ago, but they still, they made this change when they did the 911, they changed it to 248, but it used to be 228.
I'm going to pull, hold on, before you get into this, I just want, so everyone can see where we're talking about. I, I have it all, but just so-
Back in the day, it was Russo Construction when you were head at the end of that road.
So here we're talking about, so here's the, here's the building here. This was the property owner that was just in front of us a moment ago, and he's all the way back here.
Yeah.
This is 248.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, what I, leave that picture there.
Yep.
What I know is Carol owns that corner, the house.
Yep.
They dug out all the shrubbery, all the stuff, and they're going to put a parking lot there. I don't know how far that parking lot's going to be from her property, but they should put some kind of sycotry, something to help her out, so she ain't looking at that. I don't think this guy might own that. See that road he goes down to my building?
This road right here?
Yep.
Yeah.
He don't have a right-of-way on that road to go to his property. His right-of-way is the only right-of-way he has is between Carol's house and the building there. So I don't think he has a right-of-way on this road to go to, even though he owns that, he don't have a right-of-way.
Yeah, you don't need a right-of-way over your own property. You don't need a right-of-way over your own property.
Well, yeah, but to be fair, I think what he's-
The owners, and he told me that-
Why don't you go, just go to the microphone, because people that are virtual can't hear you.
Okay, so you say he has a right-of-way?
No, 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 I'm just saying, I think that the important part of the right-of-way is this. If he has that, then this is on their property. Greg, you might know better about the legality of this access?
Well, to, to be, to be fair, I think what the gentleman's talking about is the portion from Bemis Road up to the property, right in there.
Right here?
Is that what you're saying? I do not know the status of that.
Yep, because I knew the guy had owned the sign thing, and when we paved that root road 30 years ago, we all chipped in, and when I went down there, he says, "I own, I own that property, Billy. I don't have a right-of-way on it, I'm not paying a dime." And the only right-of-way he has is on Water Street between Carol's house and that building.
Yeah, he owns that fee.
Right, that's his right-of-way, where he's going to put the addition-
Down here, yep.
Our water pipes go just about where he's going to end. The water pipes go into the back, go between the two buildings, tire warehouse, and it used to be Midas Muffler, goes right between there, so and it goes across his lot, and then it goes to RC. So that, there's a water pipe right there.
That, that's good, that's good to know, I-
Well, I don't know, because it froze 30 years ago, when they went out there, Tom didn't even know where it was, but it froze.
Yep.
And it went right between those two buildings, almost to where his addition's going to end, and then it went through the parking lot of RC, the racetrack people.
Yep. Greg, do you know where that water line is?
I don't. I have it on show on the plan, but we, we know there's a gas, we know of a gas line there.
Yep.
That we're showing on our plan, but we don't have a water line showing on the plan.
It's like stormwater line?
No, I think-
We know of-
You don't have a municipal water service?
Actual water line.
I guess it's a three-inch line. It's rusty water, but-
They're going to have to relocate it.
Yeah, that's good to know.
They need to.
Whatever, it's there, because it went, it froze years ago, and right where his addition is, the guy come with cables, and he ran a cable, like a jumping cable, he ran it from that fence where it went through, all, all the way the other, I, RC place, and they unfroze the pipe. So that goes through there.
Okay.
But I don't know, the only problem, I know, I've been there for, since the 80s, but they do use that right-of-way, that, but that's a tough corner there for the fire department and all those other people, so I don't know, I don't know if he can use the backside or whatever.
You're talking about right here?
Well, that's where he don't have the right-of-way.
Right, yeah, I mean, obviously, we, we, we don't get into private property rights, so we're not going to get into, does he have access or not? That's not for the planning board to figure out, that's for him to figure out.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, right, what, what I'm saying is, that's not, we can't make the determination, we're not lawyers.
Well, I don't know, but I just, I don't think he has a right-of-way there, he's got one right-of-way in the middle there.
Yep.
And it goes, it's not a big, the Carol's house here, there's a, used to be Midas Muffler, there's a, a mechanical shop there, and they park half their vehicles in front of his right-of-way in the middle there. You've been there, right?
Yep.
Not much room for nothing to get through, right?
Yeah, right, but he owns, there's a 20, it's 20, the width there is 20 feet frontage.
What, right up to their building?
No.
Okay, there's a fence, there's not a lot of room.
Between the two yellow lines that are perpendicular to the street, that's 20 feet.
So that's how he's going to get all his trucks and everything in there?
Listen, he can actually go, at this point, that is their, I guess, one is, that is their frontage piece there, but also, you know, the access road that you mentioned previously, that's still up for, you know, whether or not people have the right to pass. If he doesn't have the right to pass, no, you don't have the right, you may not either.
That's just going to be a tough corner for them too, ma'am.
Any, any other, any other property behind that would not have a right to pass. So there's historic, let's just say there's historic rights for passing and repassing over property that's been used for many, many years. So once that occurs, there's rights that get incurred with that.
Oh, I, I don't know, I just say that.
So I'll just mention that.
That's a tough corner anyways.
But, but for what we have for our plan in front of us, they have access to the frontage, and they're making improvements with the square foot, the 2,000 square foot addition, so that's-
That's all we need.
That's what we're looking at.
All right. And I think along Carol's house, where they put in the parking lot, it's right up to her fence, they should maybe sycot, some kind of trees or something to, you know, he's talking about putting the dumpster over in front of the lady's door.
So Greg, could you bring up the parking lot piece about where the house is? Because is there a landscape buffer, anything between that? Are you actually, is it intended to go to the property line?
We do not go to the property line, no. We're about, of course, I have reduced plans, but we're, it looks like we're about 30, between 30 and 35 feet from the edge of the proposed parking space to the, it doesn't show on this plan, but if you go to, go to the other colored plan, the grading and drainage presentation plan.
Sorry, I'm in the middle of something.
Oh, no problem.
Give me a second.
We have about 30 to 35 feet between the, the property line, between Ms. Mallett and, and the edge of the parking.
I just want to confirm that, because I, that was something I was thinking about previously.
Yep.
I don't know how far back, set back, so we got a 30 to 35-foot setback.
Greg, which one did you see?
If you could go to the, the other presentation plan that we called up second, the grading and drainage present, yeah, that one there.
Oh, oh, the one I just had up? Okay.
Uh, yeah, the, actually, no, I'm sorry. We'll need the-
Yep, yep, yep. Hold on, I'm all over the place here with different things. Let's see, 222 Bemis.
Yeah, that, yeah. So you can see, if you zoom into the dark green area, this is what we're talking about. So the width of that dark green area between the property line and the proposed, you can see we have the 25-foot zoning offset labeled.
Right here, yeah.
And then you can see the edge of the pavement is about 10 feet further away from the property line, so we're, let's, let's give it the benefit of the doubt, we're at least 30 feet.
Do you see that? Carol? We're just making, pointing, pointing out that there's still going to be-
This is your property line right here?
Yeah, there's a pretty good buffer shown.
There's still going to be a treaty area of about 30 feet between-
And I, I think the best place for-
It's not 30 feet, but I understand what he's trying to say.
Well, this is 25 here to here.
Yeah, but the way they cleared the property-
Oh, the clearing, yeah.
Is from my corner fence, and it goes up diagonally.
Okay.
So they left a quite a bit of area of debris.
Oh, okay.
It's old grown trees and poison sumac, right in that area there.
Yeah.
Like diagonally. So I was just wondering if they were going to, like, stop water from coming into my, my property. That was my one concern.
Yeah.
In the middle of this picture, yeah, it floods out, right in front, between his building and this building turns into a big pond if you found a rain.
Yeah, right in between, right of way.
No, I think to the north.
Oh, you're talking about right here?
Yeah, right there, yeah.
Yeah, I think I remember back in the day that used to be big ponds.
There's a drain in the middle of it, and for some reason, they don't make it out to the street.
So that's going to be looked at.
Yep.
So another question would be where, if there's been some, already like vegetation removal, we know, see that you're going to take some more down to the corner to widen that driveway a bit as well? Can you put something a little more, should?
Yeah, I mean, we could consider, we, we do, we, we could certainly-
Their tar, or burn.
What would you like to see? A fence or?
I have a fence.
You have a fence?
I have a chain link fence here.
Okay, so in front of your-
We could consider some planting, a planting-
Maybe some plantings?
Yeah.
Just make sure that the water doesn't go-
Oh, she wants, okay, the burn, well, the water than it is, right than the landscaping.
A little bit, yes. Seeing that they would remove vegetation.
Understood, I think we could do both. I think we can, I, I think that we, our plans show that we're not directing any water towards Ms. Mallett's property. We're actually proposing to direct it down, so I think that, you know, just to reassure you on that front. And then in terms of, of, you know, screening, I don't think we do it, we would object to adding some screening perhaps right along that property line, you know, so that we can mitigate the impact of having some parking there. That seems reasonable.
Okay.
Thank you.
As green to property line, redirect drainage.
And point is noted about the water line, and the presence of the water line, and the ONM issues on the drain. I mean, thank you for raising those.
Right between the doors.
No. We, we have a gas line showing there, we do have the water line, so I appreciate that. And the, and then the stormwater issue with that catch basin is something that we would certainly need to investigate.
Okay. No, I know we were jumping around a bit. Do you, did we read the DPW comments?
I don't think we did yet.
All right. I was just looking at the right-of-way plan for that. There is a right-of-way plan. The previous right-of-way used to run through that access point to Bemis Road. They relocated it further north. I don't want to give a legal opinion, but you can look at it, it looks complicated, but there, there are ownership accesses from that right-of-way.
So did you have a right of-
I don't know. I am not a lawyer. I don't want to say he does.
Somebody told me he didn't.
I don't want to say he does or he doesn't. There's a plan from dating back to when Mike Scelley owned this in 71 that shows that, that getting relocated north to benefit all the parcels in that area. But like I said, I don't want to, I don't want to say something and then be wrong, so I'll leave that up to other people to determine if you can or you can't. All right, let me get the department comments here.
At least in front of us, there is no proposal to improve anything off the property this time, so.
All right, let's see here. Butler, applicant must prepare a narrative of how stormwater will be managed. If the post-construction impervious surface area is above thresholds given in Pittsburgh's stormwater rules and regs, the applicant will be subject to a stormwater management permit.
Yep, we, we did submit drainage calculations. Again, I don't want to bore the board with that, but if you ever need to fall asleep at night, you can open those up and take a, take a read through them.
As long as the DPW says.
Yeah, so they, there is a, so we did, we did provide calculations along with the application, so.
Okay. So, satisfy. I guess it's-
We also, we didn't read the Fairmont three ones, but I, I'm remembering now, Chris said he had them, so. There's nothing, there's nothing on here from, that was just Ryan. I don't know if Jeff had a chance to review them, but he doesn't have comments on here. We also, we didn't read the Fairmont three ones, but I, I'm remembering now. Chris said he had them, so, uh, there's nothing, there's nothing on here from, that was just Ryan. I don't know if Jeff had a chance to review them, but he doesn't have comments on here.
I'm sure they're probably gonna ask to, um, locate the utilities on a utility site plan. That, in that case, just...
Yeah, we'll wanna work with them.
Talking about trying to...
Although the gentleman seemed to suggest there might not be, uh, stellar records at the city, but, um, we, we have evidence of a gas service back there, but we did, we did not find evidence yet of a water service. But we appreciate the, thank you for, for letting us... No.
Thank you for that.
Looks like water service and drainage, so it might be stormwater as well.
So we, we will, uh, investigate both of those items.
Okay, and this is a, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? And anyone virtually? Nope. Okay.
I see no hands raised.
No hands raised? Okay. Is there a particular timeline on the project?
Um, I, I mean, I don't know it off the top of my head, but I'm sure it's like anybody else. There, uh, you know...
Year, two years?
Year to start, two years to complete. That's more than safe?
Yeah, I think they're looking to get going on this. Um, they contacted us, you know, probably six months ago now. Uh, as always, we probably couldn't move quite as fast as they would've liked us to. So I'm sure they're, I, I think, I don't think it's, uh, something they're looking to sit on, I think.
I'm sure you know why it's important to us. We, we need a start date and end date so that...
Understood.
If it takes ten years, we can...
Understood, yeah.
Um.
So, I mean, um, when do the, do the site plan, what, what do you, what is the board most comfortable putting on for a, um...
Well, you typically have, um, the year to begin.
Okay.
Right? So, because otherwise it'll lapse.
Yep.
And so once you start it, then we just want how long it's gonna take to end it, so we can say within two years after approval.
Yeah, I can imagine that once you get going on this project, it's gonna be more than a year, I, I would think. So a year to start and then a year after that to complete seems reasonable to me. I'm assuming it can be, it can be extended if...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, for, for extenuating circumstances.
And if you need to come back to ask for a sanction, ask for an extension.
Understood, yeah. So that sounds reasonable, that timeframe sounds reasonable to me.
For what it's worth, and without muddying the waters, the deed says the above-described parcel is subject to the rights of others to use a twenty-foot right-of-way. Apparent to the above-described parcel is the right to use in common with others, the thirty-three-foot right-of-way from Bemis Road that passes the northerly side of the above property. So.
All right. Okay.
Some of those things are easy to miss.
Yeah.
Does the board...
If you're not used to reading them.
Yes, yes, yes.
Have enough information this evening for me?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion's been made to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say oppose. Roll call, vote. Amanda?
Aye, in a second if you need it.
Anything?
Thank you.
Thank you. Allyn?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. And discussion?
So just, just permit conditions, um, you, you have a list of them, 'cause I wasn't writing it down, 'cause I was doing other stuff, so you might wanna read what you have.
It was about dumpster location, adding that, and that was gonna be to the north. It was also adding screening the property along their residential property line and address the drainage.
Yep, and, and I would make a note that the DPW, though they didn't put in their comments, they usually require, they're gonna require a utility location plan to show the location of the water and gas lines. I know you have the gas line on there, but the water line, the last thing we want is to, you know, disrupt other people's service for construction other than relocating the line. So, um, make sure you do a utility site plan showing where all the utility lines are so that we don't cause any issues with the neighbors.
Subject to, um, the DPW drainage comments, satisfying those. Also, we had investigating the, of course, the water and the stormwater existing drains. If they need to be upgraded, cleared, relocated, repaired. Is that everything?
Make a motion to approve the, let's see, where are we? Site plan review for Ryan Butler, two twenty-two Bemis Road, subject to conditions just mentioned.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made with a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say oppose. Roll call, vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the comments.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Greg.
All right. Second.
Where the heck can I put that? It wasn't that far away.
Thirty-second break. We're still in public hearings. Our next item up is a special permit in site plan review. The applicant, Paul Tossi, proposing the redevelopment of a building consisting of mixed-use residential with a gross floor, floor area of five thousand nine hundred thirty-nine square feet, located at three forty-seven to three fifty-five Main Street in the in-town business district. I believe it's, uh, eight residential unit, dwelling units on the second and third floors.
How're you guys doing? Jake, I assume?
I'm, uh, Jake Sapata. I'm not Paul Tossi.
What would you like up on the screen as you talk?
If you could, if you could put up actually the, uh, I've got, it's, I think it's labeled special permit. It's, it makes it easier to kind of...
Special permit presentation for planning board?
Correct.
Okay. All right, bear with me for one second. Just gotta, just had a new share here. Resume apparently. There we go.
You can go ahead and scroll down. I'll introduce myself. I'm Jake Sapata. I'm the COO of the Tossi Group of one of three partners that's, uh, working on these developments here in downtown Pittsburgh.
Paula, I have to recuse myself from this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Duly noted.
For those that don't know the voice, Alex is recusing himself.
That was Alex Lopez. So I'll write that note. Alex Lopez recused himself this part, time of the meeting.
Our head of construction, Alex Dillon, will always, is also virtual, uh, if we need to key him at any point.
And Jake, Jake, just before you get into your presentation, um, just 'cause it's fresh on my mind, Alex recused himself, that makes it a six-member board. Special permits are super majority, which means you need five of six votes. Just letting you know.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And, uh, we wanted to give you guys a quick update before we actually jump into three forty-seven. Uh, about a year ago, we came here for a special permit for, uh, the building at two ninety-eight Main Street. Uh, it's gonna be, uh, a retail space. I think Goldfish Market Tile is gonna be the retail, retailer in the front, five apartments, uh, in the building as well, if you wanna scroll down.
Oh, yeah, photo in here, yep, right there.
So, uh, we've actually completed the, um, bulk of construction here. So we've got framing complete, sprinklers are installed, we've got brand-new electrical, uh, blend, brand-new HVAC, brand-new plumbing. Uh, we're getting ready to actually start to actually spray foam insulate, uh, the entire building, um, and, uh, start putting drywall up. These are actually what the units will look like. These are lifelike renderings of, of all of that, and we actually will start pre-leasing these units soon. And if you wanna scroll down, uh, as well, uh, those, those will, hoping to start July, July fourth. We can jump into three forty-seven here if you'd like.
Mm-hmm.
So the concept of the building is, uh, to be eight market-rate units. There's, uh, four on the second floor and four on the third floor. It's gonna be a mix of two-bed, one-bath units, four of those, and four one-bad, one-bath units. And then the current vacant retail space is gonna be a barcade concept called Level One, who is also doing a site plan review today. Tenet of the project is to maintain the historic nature of the building, you know, of course, constructed by H.M. Frantus, who did most of downtown Pittsburgh at the time. So we're pretty excited to kind of incorporate everything that he did back in the day, you know, kinda highlight the architecture there, go into some of the history and, um, really make it a beautiful building. We were asked to share elevations of the building, so of course you have the front elevation there. The rear elevation is shown there as well. What I will say, um, what we can control and what we own is essentially the, the building and the land right below the building. We actually don't own the lot right behind the building, what you would see. So it's the chain link fence and then kind of the slope downhill. However, uh, we are doing our best to actually maintain that, even though it's not our property, uh, just kinda working with the Pittsburgh Jade owners to, to do that well. So if you pass by now, it's, vegetation used to be there, we cut it down. Hopefully be looking to potentially redo the fence and make it just kind of beautify the area a little bit more. And then, of course, the exterior facade of the rear building will be completely redone and, um...
So this is, so this is that little parcel you're talking about? So this is the Jade parcel, and that's the, the, the area you're talking about directly behind you?
And thank you for showing that, just, just to show what our actual footprint looks like. It's actually just in front of that little, uh...
Yep, right here.
Rear parcel right there.
Which is below grade from this and well below grade from the street, correct?
Correct.
Too bad you couldn't, that...
I know.
Just that little parcel right there, aspect of that, because, yeah, you can see like, almost like a, um, solid fence along that portion, and then you have some landscape. So you have something off the back for people to look at.
We're, we're still gonna try to do something there, but, um, i- if, right now, it is out of our control, but just wanna make know that...
Yep.
We're gonna do our best.
Yep.
Um, and...
Is there a walkway, though, that comes out of the back of that building? And is that on someone else's property, or is that, uh, how does that work?
Yeah, that...
This one right here, you're talking about, I believe, it's hard to see in this image, but it comes from your building and goes almost to Crescent.
Correct, uh, yeah, it is how, um, you, you are able to, to use that walkway right now, correct?
Yeah.
What, what I'm getting at is, is that walkway over a right-of-way? Uh, do you have legal access to use that wa- walkway?
Uh, because of the adjacent ownership on the other side. Uh, we own those buildings as well, uh, on where the walkway goes, so, uh, correct.
That answers that.
Yeah.
That may be something you might wanna, well, address legally in any future docs so that you can maintain the right to pass over that, when if anything, it ever changes hands in the future.
Absolutely.
It's great that you have it all now. But, and I appreciate you providing the photos to the rear. I was looking at some other, um, aspects, and it was like the fencing and everything, and it's like, so what's going on? It's like the front, and then you're like, oh, what's going on in the back over here? So it's, what's, what's the plan? So I'm glad you put this forward and you already, you know, bulleted out what your intentions are, which is great.
We, we will go above and beyond what's, what's kind of expected of us here, just 'cause we want the whole picture to look really, really nice and tight, so.
So what was, what's the, um, that, for building facade to original historic nature, what is the historic nature? Is, is there any one of those that is being shown now, or is it actually underneath?
Really, it's, it's...
It's like a hodgepodge going on.
It, it does kinda look like that. So, yeah, so it's, it's redoing essentially the, the rear of that. So window placements, of course, 'cause there will be apartments up there now, um, making so that, uh, window placements are good. Um, I don't think the plan is to, like, put, put brick back, back there to, to match the front. Uh, however, it looks like that's, that's like wood siding. It'll be completely brand-new, painted, and look kind of more put together and spaced out correctly with what you see with the windows and, and all that kinda stuff to match.
It will say like, I'm not, yeah, 'cause I can't tell the building, it's like the part looks wood, part might be brick.
Yeah, it's so bizarre how that...
Yeah, I can't tell to the dark one on the left what the, what the, uh...
Happens with buildings over time.
It could be.
Take on smaller projects and break 'em up, you see it all the time.
Like that, yeah, and then like if he's hanging off of it, right? Aspect of it. So as long as it's like uniform.
That's the goal, to make it one uniform back when you redo it.
Correct.
Good.
And you, you can keep going down as well.
Perfect.
Um, so we do have the floor plans, uh, the floor plans can be enlarged in a separate PDF, but I didn't wanna include them in the presentation. You can kinda get a feel for, you know, what the layout of the apartments are gonna look like. Pretty similar fashion of what we're doing across the street, uh, at two ninety-eight. We're trying to pick a look and a design and, uh, a livability and the, the way the kinda units flow. That's kind of, uh, the same for what we think tenants would want and, and people would want across Main Street, and this kinda goes with that.
Is that other wa- walkway, is that off, also to the rear? I'm gonna look, staircase.
Yeah, so we're, we're, it's, it's like a egress point that we're gonna have to be in, including in, inside of, uh, the building, whether that be like a fire escape or, uh, what have you. I, I can also have, uh, Alex Dillon, if you wanna pull him up virtually, speak to that as well.
Sure.
He's, he's got a little bit more knowledge about that than I do.
He's more than welcome to speak. I, he was, he's unmuted, so...
Didn't know if that was an existing, again, bump out from the building, is that on your property or off your property in that?
Is that already there, or is that new, is the question? Alex is unmuted.
Sure, go ahead.
Just gotta hit the microphone button. There you go.
All right, there, are we good now?
We are.
Okay. Which piece are we talking about specific?
If you can look at, uh...
Right, right where I'm circling on the screen right now, the, where the stairwell is on the second level. Is that existing, or is that proposed?
No, no, no. So that, that, that was a proposed stairwell. That is not existing currently.
Okay. It says infill existing. Oh, that must be a window opening now?
That, that is correct.
Okay.
On the, on the backside of the building, when you guys were asking about what, what it's made of, you know, there's two, there's two different materials on there. There's an old, original slate tile on the back.
See the sway?
And then there's a composite. You can see the dark brown in the back of the building, yeah, on the left-hand side over there? Yeah, that's, oh, that's old slate. I believe that is original. And the one on the other side is a composite, which probably came in thirty or forty years later.
Yeah, it looks like...
I would imagine when we take that off, we're gonna find framed-in windows.
Yeah, yeah, I bet. It almost looks like Masonite, but, yeah, so, so this, so this back corner is where we're talking about, having that egress point?
That, that's correct.
Okay.
So, but on the other plan, it looks like it's not all on your property.
Well, yeah, they, so they do own part, see, to, to like, see where this...
Yeah, if you go back, so...
I'll pull it up again. So they own this stretch here that is behind the building. See where my cursor is?
True, but Paul, it's always way over to the right, though.
Well, it's, so the building, the GIS isn't perfect, so don't pay entirely...
Okay.
To the building locations. The, let's assume for the sake of argument, the building ends right here.
I just wanna confirm that, that's all.
Okay.
Is it, is it on you?
It's not unusual for the GIS to be off by that much, but I, I assume that's on. Is there a site plan somewhere? Did they do, they didn't bother doing a site plan, 'cause, hold on, see if I get it here. No. Um, I didn't even look for one, because it's a pre, it's a pre-existing lot. They might not have drawn one. I don't think, I don't think there is a...
Oh, just that weird L, that L rectangle is kind of, whether or not, I just wanna confirm just the plan here that we're approving, if it is or isn't, or do you have to make an easement or accommodation with the...
Um, so we're doing a, a little bit of land, um, behind there, just not all the way up to Crescent Street essentially. And so we're not encroaching upon their piece of land by doing...
Given that it's a special permit, Paul, you just make a condition that we're assuming that all improvements are located entirely within the boundaries of the property?
Uh, I understand. I just wanted to know, like, because what we just talked about, whether or not everybody's, uh, does the applicant know that whether or not that's on your property or not?
Mm-hmm.
Or is, does the property line seem to be off on the GIS mark?
Yeah, so, am I, am I still unmuted?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, yeah, that, that piece right there is definitely on our property.
Okay.
It's, it's right next to, yeah, uh, Pittsburgh Jade, the restaurant. So it definitely belongs to us.
Okay.
Essentially, that stairwell brings you up and exits, exits us on our rooftop. It's on the lower level.
Okay.
There's a better one, Paul. This is the, the old Esri image, which basically shows the, the, the property, this, this is...
Right, and then, yeah.
But it's somewhat three-D. See how you can see part of the front of the building?
Right.
So the building is actually, there's a little more room behind it, 'cause the, the, you see part of the front of the building.
The lot line is square now with the buildings.
Right, exactly.
Much, otherwise it was like, looking, it was...
Right, yeah, it's, I do, look at these GISs all the time.
Thank you for that clarification.
Not unusual for them to be a little bit off. Actually, the Google image will probably be a little bit better. Not really, but anyway.
Not an issue.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, this is the third floor then, since we just did the second floor?
Correct.
Um, and the third floor has that external egress that goes to Crescent. Is that what this is right here? The, the one that we saw from, that Peter mentioned from...
Outside.
Right here? Is that the, this, this decking here, is that what's shown on this plan right here?
That's what they're, that's what they're depicting. That is correct, which that all goes away.
Oh, that's going away? Is, are they, are they, are they doing a new one?
Nope, it's coming off.
So what's the egress of the third floor? Just this internal one means of egress?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is that a balcony? Then what is that on the exterior?
No, they were just showing the existing, when they put it on the drawings for us, to show that there's something out there. Um, the intent is not to put anything on the backside of that building.
And it's all getting demolished? The, what's there now?
Okay.
That, that's our intent.
Oh, good, good, okay. Suppose that solves the original question of can you access, can you, can you use it for access if you're getting rid of it? Perfect, excellent.
Ask and thou shalt receive. We've got answers.
Here's our, uh, parking plan. We're about three hundred and fifty feet from the entrance of the Mill Street Parking Garage. Uh, we will be, which is right here, basically seeking a letter, uh, from City Hall for residential parking permits at the lower level of the Mill Street Parking Garage.
I believe it's ten spaces?
Yes.
Ten spaces. We've got, uh, four spaces out, uh, two bedrooms, one point five times four, six spaces, and then we've got the four one-bedrooms, which is one space per, which is four, for six plus four is ten.
I had mentioned to Paul Tossi when I talked to him about that, and I think he knows this, 'cause we had talked about it in other presentations that, that I think he was aware of, that the resident parking, um, is to be in the lower level of the Mill Street Garage and not on the upper level, that you should encourage, not encourage, instruct your tenants to park in the lower level. Um, the upper level will be used for, like, your business, the, and the other businesses on Main Street, the arcade business and everyone else, so that they have easier access. 'Cause as I'm sure you know, what's most important to the commercial tenants is having people, having an easy place to park, easy place to walk. And, um, the upper deck on Mill is designed more for that, so...
Absolutely, and it was more than fifty percent full at four o'clock when I was walking down there today, which is great.
Yeah.
And also regards to the, the maintaining of the parking permit, that's like a condition of you have to provide off-street parking spaces. So it's not optional of, do you, you know, wanna pay extra for it to the tenant? It's like, this is part of it. If you have a car, you, this is what it is. It should be included in your fees.
Yes.
Standard fees of not, of just the people then just trying to park off the back of Blossom and areas.
Absolutely, that's our intent.
Okay.
And then finally, uh, if you wanna go to the last slide, uh, I'll discuss our trash plan. So, kinda unique to this building and kinda what we're gonna be doing with, uh, potentially more buildings on Main Street, um, we'll be essentially building these trash rooms for, uh, the building. So instead of having kind of trash out in the open, unfortunately, we don't have the, uh, the luxury of being able to back a truck in from Crescent into a dumpster. You know, we're kinda forced to build a, a trash room here. And so, you know, the tenants, when they enter the building, you know, they'll kinda have like a foyer, you see, uh, that type of, uh, layout a lot here in the New England area. They'll have kind of their mail-in packages, where they'll have all their letters stored, where the postman will come and, and drop a lot of that stuff off, Amazon as well. Then they'll have the locked door that goes up to the stairs. If you go through the mail-in packaging, the, uh, trash room is located there, and that is for the whole building. We are going to be contracting a private trash service to basically come and remove the trash, uh, from the trash room. And, um, the intent is, is to make that place as clean as possible, uh, to keep the tenants there, you know, of course, have no odor, and, um, really maintain the cleanliness of, of that space, 'cause it, last thing we want is it had to get a little gnarly and, um, unfortunately, uh, had to be a problem, so...
Okay.
That's the intent right now.
So what you're saying is there's, there is not gonna be an instance when there's gonna be trash barrels placed on the curb?
That is not our intent. Our intent is to come in privately, take the trash out, so we don't have to... That is not our intent. Our intent is to come in privately, take the trash out, so we don't have to put the trash bins on the curb.
Can we make that a condition?
Yes.
Yeah, so one of the conditions is going to be subject to the trash plan that they have in this document, so. Yep. Because if they have to deviate from this plan, they'll have to come back and explain to us how they're gonna deviate from this plan. Yeah, I agree with you. Because that's a concern of mine, too, that you have trash barrels lined up on Main Street.
Yeah. Similar, similar to the other.
Yeah, your other building, isn't that how?
Well, no, that was a little different on, that was a little different on Boulder, but no, right across the corner, the corner of Blossom.
It housed inside and they're gonna wheel them out, right?
Correct. It is having like a little fence built around it.
And I think that's what we have to more look at, at the ones on Main Street, because we're not really looking to see trash barrels on the sidewalk.
Exactly. Last thing we want is trash on Main Street, so.
Yeah, right.
Yep.
In that regard. So that's great. That's addressed.
I do, I do want to address as well, this, this may not have been updated with this meeting, but we did get a new form of intent amended today around two or three o'clock from the building commissioner, taking out the requirement to have a special permit from the zoning board of appeals.
Yep. As I explained to, to you and to Paul, it's not necessarily germane to this meeting, but the, the original form of intent said that it was, they were subject to a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. Our interim building commissioner refiled one today, which is up on the screen, which removed that from the form of intent. So at least we, this board doesn't have to worry about conflicting conditions with another board, so.
We just be looking at those, including waivers of the fifty-foot setback waiver and density?
Correct.
All right, moving on to the next part of the presentation, who's going to the first?
That's the next hearing.
No, no, they had the first, well, he had the.
Yeah, it's another, it's a separate hearing.
But can you show the front of the building?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Do you want this or do you want the actual current?
Well, there's.
All right, let me, let me zoom in a little bit here. I, this is, I suppose, germane to this. I, what you're getting at is what's the front gonna look?
So the bill, yeah, what's the front gonna look like and with the improvements and then, because this is a special permit portion, the next one is not. And then also, so we're seeing, just to germane to this, the entrance doors are to the left for the apartments?
Yeah, all the way to the left. You see that?
Right here.
Where the, above the blue, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, below the blue.
So, so what we are doing, just so you all are aware, is, you know, kind of like in the old, old days, they kind of had the display boxes there, when you'd put a suit up there or a mannequin or something. So we're actually bringing all of that space forward to create more square footage inside of, inside of the, of the area there. So you won't see those old-school displays boxes there anymore.
Is it gonna be a flat wall all the way across?
Yeah, that's the intent.
From left to right?
From left to right.
Okay.
Well, so if you see kind of where it triangles in, and you got, that, that is a structural beam, and that does support the front side of the building there all the way to the right, those doors will stay there.
Yep.
However, the, the right side, basically, the, the triangle boxes will get flat.
So it'll be like a vestibule? You'll have a door and a door?
Yeah.
Okay.
So all the glasses, you don't have glass on the exterior except for the doors?
So the, there will be glass. It's just it won't like be triangled out. So you won't have glass, glass. The glass will come in to just be totally flat.
Okay.
For that portion, correct?
Right.
We, we do address this in the site plan review and the next.
True.
And happy to talk about it now.
So, because this is the special permit portion for the frontage, the, I mean, I'll say for the building aspect of that versus the site plan of, of the next application. But, so any conditions we have on the, on the updating the exterior would be on, would be in this regard. So it's like, what are the, what are the plans you're going to be painting? What's the material in the front? Are you retaining that? Are you just painting it? What are you?
Can I make a suggestion? Can I just make a suggestion that we, that we, that we hold this? We can even continue it for an hour and do the site plan for the arcade on, and then vote on that first, 'cause that's less important, and then tie those into this? I'm just, I'm trying to make it easier for you, 'cause I know what you're trying to do.
Well, this is.
Because we have more control on the special permit, so it's very important that the special permit's correct, so I, I.
Well, yeah, I think we should finish this, because this is just looking at the frontage.
Okay.
Pieces like that, and then we can just deal with the.
That's fine. I just.
No, I understand where you go.
Yep.
So, so that's the, the question is, what are you doing to update the facade on the building?
Particularly the, the, the steel girder there between those decorative moldings that you see a kind of, I assume it's steel right here, that runs under all these decorative moldings, that's rotten, that's, you know, worn paint. And that's gonna be all, I assume, cleaned up and?
Sure. It'll all be cleaned up. I'll also let Alex Dillon address what kind of he has envisioned for the exterior facade here, kind of below that second level, I guess is really what we're focused on. Basically, above the second level, it's just cleaning it up, or above the first level, cleaning it up, making sure the brick looks nice. Really love the architectural elements that, that we have on that second floor, third floor. As we look at kind of what we have outlined and read there going across the whole front of the building, really wanted to match. Of course, we have an awning that kind of comes out in the entire front of the building, but.
Okay.
Sir, how, how about you chime in on this one as well?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, we, we don't like that old storefront look at all. And we really like the idea of some type of stone to complement a brick and the concrete columns on, on the left and the right of that building. So I think when we bring all of that out, we're gonna incorporate some sort of stonework to kind of enhance it and, and make it more beautiful. It's just this way outdated, and we don't like it either, so.
I concur.
Do you, Alex, do you anticipate that work to be done on-site? Or do you anticipate to hire an architect to design what you're gonna, what you're gonna hire your contractors to do?
Well, so I think most of it, we're gonna have some drawings coming from an architect. We're trying to get that thing solidified on what that front looks like. And we don't have that on paper yet.
Okay. So the reason, the reason why I say that is, it makes me very nervous. We've been doing this a long time, and I, I, it always makes me nervous when we say it's gonna look like this without seeing what it's actually gonna look like.
Oh, yeah.
So what I would like to do, if it's amenable to you, and I, I assume that you, you can show this, is at some point in the future, not necessarily holding up any permit conditions, but at some point in the future, prior to starting construction, showing us a proposed elevation of what the front of that building's gonna look like, especially because you're changing it so dramatically by getting rid of the, you know, the, that storefront look that's there now. If you could, you know, again, I assume they're gonna be designed anyway. If you can, if you could show us what, what you're proposing, and that way we could say, okay, yes, it, it's, it's gonna look like that. That's, that's what we have envisioned, then, then, then that would be, I think, preferable.
Yeah, that's not, that is not a problem.
Perfect.
Pete and I have been talking about this for a while, and our architect knows kind of what we're looking for, so I'm sure we can absolutely have that done for you.
Awesome.
You're gonna, what are you doing with the windows there on the, on the upper floors?
So the, we're trying to keep all of the original in place. So we are not taking those windows out. We will repair if we can, which I think they're all in pretty good shape right now. And so we may be putting, if, if we have to have some sort of, if we have an issue because of the HERS rating, we may have to put an internal window, like a storm window, to meet our HERS rating. But the exterior original windows are gonna stay like they are. We're just gonna clean them up.
Okay. I just wanted, it's, that was, when we were talking about the architecture, and we know you, I just do a great job. Not to say, something, somebody might put forward like white vinyl windows of X, Y, Z, and it's just kind of like, you know, we want to just make sure it's a cohesive look going on.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody's spending a good.
No, we, we love the way our buildings look. Yeah, we love the way this building looks. And we're, we're gonna clean it up and, and keep it as is, just like we're doing across Street 298. We're not going to change those windows. I think it would change the whole look of the building, and that wouldn't be what we want.
Good.
Anybody have any questions about that? So we can make it subject to.
Providing.
A mission of architectural.
Providing a proposed front elevation, yep.
For approval, so at a later date. What it does is it's satisfying a permit condition. It's not a modification, so we just have to come back, when you're ready, to come back to, for the board approval.
Paula will tell you the story, too, that my most famous memory of on the planning board is someone promising us that they were gonna build a building looking like the Bolton Public Library.
Oh, my God.
A very fancy building, and it ended up being a prefab steel building. That was the board's mistake, and we have yet to make that mistake sense, so. That's why, that's why I say those things.
Yeah, I completely understand.
We all just have, everybody wants to be in the same page or the book, at least the book for expectations.
We, we have a vision for, for what these things look like, and we want it to last for a very long time, so. It has to look a certain way, otherwise I won't be happy either. So this is kind of how it is.
Good. I like when there's a high bar for both of us.
Board members have questions?
I, I only have one suggestion.
Go ahead.
Paul, if you want to open your email.
Yeah.
I sent you a picture.
Yeah.
I have a pretty big file of Main Street buildings. It may have some really nice, very old photos of that building.
Oh, cool.
So.
All right.
You might wanna get in touch with me, and I'll be happy to share them with you. I just found one quickly, but it's not a real good one, but it'll give you an idea of what might be out there.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'd love that.
Yeah, well, you would. Absolutely. We would.
And there it is. And there it is. All right, so we're talking right there, Pete.
Look at the fancy top it once had.
Yeah, yeah.
Castle.
I'm telling you. There's a lot of buildings that are like that.
If you're curious about what it should look like, and I know he just said this, but he's the guy to talk to. So definitely be in contact with Peter if you're looking to match anything up to the way it used to be.
Well, you know, we talked about canopies, and I'm really happy to see that they used to have canopies on everything.
Yeah. What was that?
As long as it's the right type, it looks good.
Nineteen-hundred-ish, Pete? Do you have any?
Both that, yeah.
Yeah. No kidding.
Wow.
Awesome.
All right.
Nice pick.
Yep.
There any comments from the public at this time? Is anybody in our forum here that'd like to speak? And is there anybody virtual?
Uh, yes. Mary Jo. Go ahead, Mary Jo.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. I just wanted to state something that I imagine might be a bit obvious, but the intended use for the first floor really lines up nicely with some of the vision that we've had for dining and nightlife, commercial recreation, things to do in the downtown. And, and so this is a bar arcade.
We didn't, we didn't, we're not on that one just yet, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. We're on the residential portion of it.
That's the, that's the next hearing.
It'll be the next hearing.
Let me, let me, let me get myself out of here. Sorry about that.
No worries.
It's okay.
All right, so we have, the only comment I see here is, please note if there's an increase in occupancy, the applicant will need to apply for a wastewater connection permit to determine the new sewer connection fees. DPW engineering must witness CC inspection of existing sewer lateral to determine if its condition is okay to reuse. That's Ryan in engineering, and then, I don't know, let's see if Jeff has something here. Jeff has applicant to confirm with water and sewer departments that utility services is still adequate for upgrade. Applicant to confirm with fire department that fire suppression system is adequate. If needed, bonded contractor with good standing in the city shall be used. Applicant to reach out to engineering sewer and water departments for all permits. Applicant to CCTV sewer lateral connection to confirm integrity of lateral and connection. Engineering department to be present for CCTV. That's, we got pretty standard conditions, I think, so. We'll, we'll just incorporate those conditions into an approval, and then you'll just have to meet whatever the DPW conditions are. And just while I'm on it, Paula, the conditions for the next one are almost identical, because it's the same building. They are identical. For three, four, three, for the arcade.
Let's not go there.
I'm just saying, so we don't have to reread them. They're, they're the same.
They're slightly different. They'll be slightly different. I'll explain why, but. So we're just talking on this one, uniform of the back building facade on that. And then you'll, you'll do that with the back building. You're gonna maintain the trash room on the interior, so no exterior trash storage.
Correct.
And waivers for the fifty-foot setback in the density. And subject to also obtaining the ten, maintaining the ten parking spaces in the, in the garage or any other off-street parking to be included in any agreements. And also subject to seminal of the architectural renderings elevations for approval for the front facade.
Sounds good.
The only caveat.
That was prior to.
The only caveat I had to add to that was that the parking permits that you mentioned, and I think you, I think you said this, but I was focused on something else, that they be maintained in perpetuity, and that the tenants are to be instructed by the property owner to park in the lower level of Mill Street Garage only, to the best of their ability. Obviously, I know you can't control everything that you do, but your, your instruction should be, this is where you guys park. And then I think you might have said it, but I didn't hear it, like Peter had said, internal trash per, per the plan provided?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And also, and I'll just mention to you, if in the future you don't think you need the ten parking spaces, you can look back and keep documentation about how many, is it really only one per unit scenario? So whether or not that can, it's like, we want to see that parking is met so that we have, that is being maintained. But also on the other side, there's a parking, be parking demand also in the parking garages, so we just don't want empty spaces either scenario. So if it's like, you'll figure out what the balance is, so be.
Absolutely.
So tent, you know, get the tent to start, but if you don't need them, need them, they can be shared with others.
There will hopefully come a time where we'll need them.
Yeah.
I had the, I don't, I don't know how you worded it, but I did have some specific wording as to the facade improvements. I did write facade improvements and to beautify the, the exterior, the rear of the building per the applicant's presentation plan labeled special permit, planning board meeting, April twenty-three.
Okay.
Just because that particular plan showed what they were gonna do with the back of the building.
I'm glad you read it in, so we'll have the transcript to write it in for minutes. Is there anything else from anyone?
No, I'm good.
And what do you think your timeline is for completion?
So.
Two years?
Yes, definitely.
Within that time.
Within two years. We'll probably start here in the next six months on the residential portion. That's the goal, at least.
And Paula mentioned that, that the, there's an H-TIP application that's May-ish at some point?
I think it's a July.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, so we will not start until we file that and get a decision.
Perfect. Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion's been made to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye with, oh, sorry. Motion made to close the hearing with a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say oppose. Roll call. Amanda?
Aye.
Alyn?
Aye.
Alex? Oh, sorry. No, Alex, because Alex recused himself. Thank you. Paul?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. And now we have discussion, which I think we read off the conditions, so.
I'll make a motion to approve three forty-seven to three fifty-five Main Street, the special permit and site plan review, subject to the conditions mentioned.
All right. Yep, and waivers.
Yeah, and the waiver of the fifty-foot setback and the density waiver.
Second.
And with the second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say oppose. Roll call. Amanda?
Aye.
Alyn?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. Okay. Now.
I assume you're sticking around for this one?
I'm gonna just move over right and let them take the mic.
Next, we have site plan review, proposing the commercial business of an arcade bar located on the first floor of three forty-seven, three fifty-one Main Street in the Intow Business District. So this is the first floor of the building that we just looked at. And I guess, and in regards to this, it also appears to be looking for an outside patio on the sidewalk area. So we'll be looking at that as well for as part of the site. That's why I was mentioning as part of the site plan will be different, because we're looking at the outside patio.
Right. I just reread them, though. The DPW comments are identical, so we don't need to go over the, the comments again. They're exactly the same.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Josh Rife, and this is Brittany Rife, my wife. It's nice to meet you. Yeah, so just to go over the, kind of the concept of the barcade downstairs.
Oh, hold on one second, sorry, again, I, I have it up, but I'm not sharing my screen, so I'm looking, I'm looking at it myself, sorry.
This is a new term, we had arcade bar, but it's a barcade.
Oh, barcade, yeah, that's, that's the slang term.
It's copyrighted, so we have to say bar arcade.
Ah.
Or arcade bar, arcade is a copyrighted word, you cannot use it.
Yeah, we already got flagged on Facebook.
Yeah, geez.
But just to go over the concept of it, so, on the left side, that's just the ground floor layout, um, that was recently made by the architect. And the door, all the way to the left, has a ramp that goes down to the arcade itself. The middle section and the left section are actually where the arcade machines will be mainly lined up. Uh, we have pinball machines, um, a Dance Dance Revolution game, a ski, ski ball machines, uh, arcade cabinets, retro style, things like that. And then, all the way to the right, there's a, uh, bar there, it's a standing bar, there won't actually be, uh, seats there, or any bar stools. Those will just, it'll be a standing bar, just to get novelty drinks. It's mainly an arcade that has a bar in it, but it's nice for adults to, you know, also enjoy that as well. And, um, it'll have TVs up there, and things to look at, like retro, um, you know, Back to the Future, you know, movie.
Eighties and nineties stuff.
Eighties and nineties things, kinda just to go into that universe, and the building itself really adds to that. We really liked it, because it was an old-style brick building, and we were like, this is, it, it looks old and industrial, and it looks like something that you'd see in the eighties. If you go all the way to the back, to the right, um, there's, there's a, there's a tall section, this is a very tall roof, um, underneath. That's gonna be a game lounge area, more for couch, co-op, uh, Nintendo games, that, uh, kids can play. Tournaments are very popular, if anybody here has ever been to the Worcester Free Play, um, it's very much based on that. It's, they have a retro arcade bar as well. This is a little bit different, they don't have a game lounge, but it's based primarily on the same model. The main point of this whole thing is, it's not a pay-per-play, so you don't actually have to go in and pay for each machine to use it. You pay one cover charge, and then you're able to play as much as you want, anything you want, uh, for as much time. So, that's kind of the attractive part of this. The patio on the outside, um, that has two exits right there, um, that's an addition that we loved, because just having an, an outside space, just to chill out, uh, from, you know, the, the busy inside, was something that we were looking forward to. Um, we were looking at canopy designs, which we really liked. We saw that old picture from the last presentation, which was exciting, 'cause it seemed like it had a canopy, that we were kind of thinking of. Um, maybe not a cloth one, but an aluminum one, the rafter style, that we were, were, uh, looking forward to. And we would have, uh, high-top tables out here without seating as well. The railing is able to be seen through, um, just because of, you know, security reasons, you know, patrol cars going by, they can see inside. And, um, yeah, that's, that's pretty much it, that's the concept. I will note on the site plan as well, railing's gonna be like, uh, kind of the pretty black iron rod, right, type stuff. And then, there's actually a gate, it's, it's a label that comes out onto the sidewalk as well, so people can, can get out as well.
Yeah, so it's exit-only on the two, so the entrance to the, um, arcade area is to the left, where you see the word, like, one hundred.
Right, all the way to the left.
An exit, there's two exit doors that go, will go out to this patio area, and then, there's a single exit, um, from the patio area to the sidewalk.
Yes.
So, here's a current, current view of the sidewalk, my, my only concern, and I think we're okay, 'cause it's a very deep sidewalk in that portion, is that the access width that's left, it, so it's seven feet from, from the edge of the building out for that patio, that the access portion that's left provides enough width on the concrete, not the brick, for handicap access. Meaning, that brick needs to be at least, whatever it is, forty-eight inches wide, thirty-six inches wide, whatever the number is, because I can tell you, as someone who pushes a wheelchair, it, it is, the brick around downtown is impossible.
Right.
So, you have to be able to get through that area with your patio, on the concrete, not touching the brick.
Gotcha.
Um, I, I don't know how we solve that, because your plan isn't, doesn't have the scale of the remaining. It's, so it says seven, seven feet here. It doesn't say how much is left, and that's a very important number.
For sure, um, from the edge of the gate to the edge of the brick, so not, not the concrete part of the sidewalk, but, to your point.
Yeah.
But to the edge of the brick is nine feet, ten inches.
Oh, perfect.
Um, so, we will definitely be within that forty-eight inch or four-foot kind of requirement there, that we need on the flat portion of the.
So, it can't be, it can't be nine feet after the seven feet, 'cause I did a scale, hold on, I did a scale on GIS, and it wasn't even. Hold on, let me look, let me do it here, while we're all here, let's go to the aerial, if I can go back here, um.
It is, it is tough, I, I did the same thing that you did, and we had to physically go out there and actually measure it with a tape measure.
Oh, you did?
To, uh, that.
So, you did measure from the edge of where you're going to, hold on, let me.
Correct, 'cause the gate is, it's a little more than seven feet, it's seven feet, like, three inches, so we did it from that seven, seven feet, three-inch point.
Okay, 'cause I was doing, so, I was measuring here to, you know, here to there is only, it says fif, uh, thirteen and a half feet.
Correct, it, it, the, the Google aerial is, is not accurate.
Okay.
So, the gate, actually, if you, for reference, comes out, you see where those, uh, brick kind of blocks come out of the building?
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, so it's like halfway, it cuts those halfway.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So, so it comes out to about here?
Exactly.
Okay.
And then, from there, all the way to, to your point, the, the edge of the brick is nine feet, ten inches, at the shortest part, then it goes a little over ten feet.
Okay.
The more closer you get.
I'm on the wrong area here, your measurement, okay, 'cause he, I mean, you can measure from the three D two, so I can measure to the interior of the building, yes, that says nineteen feet, um, to there. Um, okay, alright, i- as long as, as long as we're confident that there's more than enough, and that becomes, you know, um, part of the record, uh, because if it isn't, that's gonna be problematic.
For sure.
Um, the most important thing, I love the idea that you're having a patio, and I think there's plenty of room there, 'cause it's very big. The most important thing there is having adequate ADA access. And again, we can't count that brick area, because it's so difficult for people in wheelchairs to use that brick area. So, um, as long as we have, you know, adequate access to get through there without problem, I'm perfectly fine with it.
And you mentioned, so, we'd like to know, like, what that fencing material is going to look like, you mentioned it was gonna be, like.
Kind of the black rod iron, like, the nice stuff that you would see.
Yep.
I, I believe Mamawana's might have that as their patio, um, they have railings that are up, they might be black, I, I might be wrong, though, I, I just went past there, but they, I believe they had black railings.
Okay. Feel free to put some planters out there, too, that would think we'd be very helpful to.
You were planting in the patio area, not in.
Yeah, like, to, to help.
Yeah.
I wonder if the city would ever be, uh, okay with eliminating that small strip of brick that's against the sidewalk in the street. Because, you know, in a lot of places in the city, those strips are in pretty bad shape anyway. And, uh.
It was always, it was always such a good idea, they looked nice, but they did not age.
They don't hold up.
No.
Hold up, no.
And I, I would much rather see outdoor seating than I would that brick strip.
I think it should be like, color, they, right, the brick on it should be like, um, a colored concrete type of thing, that.
My, my father, who's a mason, would agree, he's a brick mason, and brick-on sidewalk, just, it all crumbles over time, so it's, it's really, and he's in a wheelchair as well, so.
Mm-hmm.
We feel the pain on that.
Sure.
With that, so, the other aspect, just wanna bring this up about the outdoor patio. It's in the zoning ordinance of, just the, with outdoor patios, subject to a building commissioner review. We're looking at a site plan, too, to bring some of this out, um, but also, making sure you have insurance and, and permission from the city, because it's on the city public way. So, you need to get permission from the city, I think there's, there should be some type of, um, ou, outdoor seating, uh.
There is a retail license that we have all set up, ready to go.
So, so it's gonna say, so, this is, this part of it, still, that part of it, which.
Right, okay.
There. Great, do we have questions from the board on this, any, at this time?
I'm just excited.
Yeah, pumped, pumped about the use, I wish you all the luck in the world, I think it's awesome.
It's a great concept.
Oh, yeah.
It's kind of interesting that you should come up with this at this point, because just, just over the weekend, I was talking to my son. Uh, he went to visit a bar arcade in Amesbury.
Right.
And he was really impressed with how busy it was there, and how many people were there, so I think this concept of coming to Fishburg is excellent. I think it'll really work.
The, uh, Free Play one in Worcester is entirely packed all the time, um, we're pretty much regulars, and it's just a fantastic time. We think it'll be perfect here, um, so, we're excited as well.
Is there a time limit on, like, how long somebody can play Pac-Man?
Uh, there isn't, um.
Yet.
Kind of common. You know what I mean, like, if you can play Unlimited, then what, other people that wanna play?
We've been to Free Play a lot of times, I think that maybe a few times, people are waiting for the Dance Dance Revolution games, 'cause, you know, you play a song, it takes a pretty long time. But the cabinets themselves, people are very, um, nice about that, I've never seen anybody say, like, this is my machine. Like, this is my Pac-Man.
Up here till closing.
Oh, yeah.
And, like, your next, if you put a quarter.
Oh, okay.
On the screen, there's like a little lip.
Cool.
So, but like, the older games, nobody, they're like, oh, oh, that's cool, and they leave, and the next one, they'll play it.
Yeah.
Um, for the game lounge, though, the couch co-op, we can see how people would be waiting for that, but there's a system that we have that you would actually, um,
Rent the controller.
Rent a controller, so that you can go, and then you would have your time slot, and then you could give it up.
Nice.
But even at that point, people don't really, you know, push for those things, they're like, oh, somebody's playing, that's okay, we'll play something else.
So, I was reading it in the narrative that it's a family-oriented, but then after, like, seven PM, it goes to twenty-one plus, so you can, to a different crowd.
Uh, it's.
More the bar.
It's more on a, like, an adult hangout spot after seven PM, um, that's the way Free Play has it, it works well, um, Sundays are family days, primarily, they do well on those days, but people don't really wanna be around kids all the time, so after seven PM, that would be the time, and it, it takes away the, um, the allure of having underage drinking as well, you know, you can just be like, you can't come in at this time, you know, and then have that for adult things. And so, the college is a big push for this as well, um, I'm a Pittsburgh State alumni for the game design program, and kids just want something to do in Pittsburgh, you know, and this sounds like it would fit the bill.
Great, now, is there anybody in the audience here, I'm, I'll get to Mary Jo in just a second. Nobody here, alright, Mary.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Um, you mentioned in the narrative about food.
Yes.
Of you bringing it in?
Yes.
You're not gonna?
No, we're not gonna make, uh, any food there, it'll be prepared prior, uh, catered, and we've been, um, speaking with, uh, Elmer Melendez, um, Dario's and Taco's Tequilas.
Oh, nice.
He, he has a catering license in Pittsburgh, and he's already expressed a lot of interest in catering for us. So, we plan to have pizzas, uh, handheld foods, things that are simple, that we can heat and then serve. We, we don't want to deal with, you know, all the things that go along with a kitchen.
No, like popcorn machine, or anything like that?
A popcorn machine.
I was gonna say, that seems like it falls right in that category.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, excellent.
It's not kitchen.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, yeah.
Where's the trash gonna be stored?
The, uh, the trash, uh, planned for the, uh, second floor, it's right next to our building, we plan to go up to there, and then we're gonna have our own spot, so. It's going to be. It will increase the frequency that we have to essentially remove the trash from the trash.
Oh, so they're gonna use the same trash room that you're designing in?
Correct, for the residents and for the barcade as well.
Okay, perfect, dual purpose, so that was the aspect of that, okay, Mary Jo.
Thank you, um, I don't wanna say too much, uh, but, uh, just because I was speaking at the wrong item. I, I wanted to emphasize how wonderful it is, um, that Josh and his wife have brought this concept together in, in our downtown, at a time when we're so focused on exactly these types of things. Some people call it commercial recreation, some people call it dining and nightlife, whatever it may be, it really lines up well. And then, uh, for it to be on the ground floor of a building that Paul and Jake are activating with residential up above, it, it's even better. So, I just wanted to say, this concept for the ground floor, um, is really good, and the fact that it's trendy, and it's doing well in other communities, just makes it, um, even more appealing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jo.
Yes, it was, I guess we would consider this an amusement facility. Purposes, any further comments?
No, I'm ready when you are.
All set.
Okay.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion's been made with a second, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose, roll call vote, Amanda?
Aye.
Alyn?
Aye.
Alex? Oh, Alex left, so, that's right.
Sorry.
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. And now, discussion?
The only thing I had was that the railings to be rod iron or black aluminum, or something similar, um, and that they be, you know, vi, you, you be able to see through them, uh, which I think is a usually a condition anyway, um, and that they maintain adequate access, typical, I hate to use the word ADA, but ADA width, a typical usable width between the patio area, prior to the brick section along the road frontage. That's my only concern, everything else, uh, just ma, it'll match the permit conditions for the special permit. I would suggest that when they do the elevations for the front of the building for the special permit, that you just, obviously, this is included all in that, and you can show the patio in your elevations.
I don't know that that has to be, 'cause that's just part of the frontage of doing that aspect of it.
Yeah, like I said, it's already covered, it's already covered in the special permit, so.
So, we don't have to do it for this site.
Doesn't necessarily have to be.
Encumber the site plan.
Doesn't necessarily have to be, I'm fine with that.
We'll just keep it with the, the patio, the trash.
That's fine.
And access. And apply for any other applicable permits for the outdoor patio.
Right, I'm fine with that.
Alright.
Make a, uh, make a motion to approve the site plan review for, uh, commercial business of an arcade bar located on the first floor of three forty-seven to three fifty-one Main Street, subject to the conditions we just mentioned.
Alright, and is there?
Second.
There's a second to that, I'll say, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose, Amanda?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye, and I get, what's your timeline?
Um, within the next three months, uh, we should actually be looking at, um, constructing the space and having it all set, pretty soon. Yeah, we'll start construction in the summer, uh, hand it over to them, the, the goal is in August, and I believe you guys have an open. September sixteenth is the tentative date to open, that's supposed to be the first day, second week of classes, which would be nice, if we can meet that.
Sometimes it can take a little bit of time for decisions to get written, so just, if you don't hear anything, just check in with the, the city.
Right, thank you.
Well, good luck, we're happy to.
Good luck, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Good luck.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck.
Alright, let me get this situated here.
Alright. Is Alex back?
Yeah, I'm here.
Alright. So, we can say, Alex is now back in the meeting.
I, I do, I wanna apologize before we get into this hearing, I'm just noticing now, and it's, no, it's not Chantel's fault, it's my fault, that the building department had separate review comments under the same category, but they weren't on the same file. I wasn't reading them when we did department review comments, so.
Did you see that there's DPW comments as well?
I got all the DPW comments, I was reading every one of the DPW comments.
In a different folder.
Yes, I was reading all the DPW comments, this, the, the interim commissioners' comments, I did not read.
I didn't catch that either.
Um, I'm looking at them as we speak, um, one of them was about taking away, uh, the, removing, or changing the, the determination for three twenty river, which we knew about, the other one was about the ZBA approval for Amico, which we knew about, um. Says, he did write, we'll need to comply with all fire department access road requirements, access road already exists, but, um. The warehouse had, it's fine, sprinkler system, um, the one we just heard, it says the entire structure will need to be retrofitted with a compliant sprinkler system, if one doesn't currently exist, a chapter thirty-four investigation evaluation report is needed, new residential units need herds rating, all things that aren't pertinent to, to us today.
I would say, Chantel, just make sure the applicants get the comments.
Yeah.
I can forward them when I follow up for this meeting.
No, I, I don't think anything would've changed any decisions we made. Yeah, no, I, I don't think anything would have changed any decisions we made.
Just more heads up, of course, if you're gonna install dwelling, you're gonna have to meet the fire code, so.
And, and for the record, there's no comments on this current one from the building commissioner, so, um, I got the DPW stuff here, but anyway, go ahead.
So we have special permit modification, Mad River Holdings proposing to modify existing site plans for a large onsite solar array, ground mounted solar facility to reduce the solar rate, to reduce the solar array limits and improve the previously approved stormwater management system located at Zero Ashburnham Road. And then I did forward a couple of comment, I think we forward a couple of comments with that of like, um, which you did provide that a narrative. And we wanted to see, you're gonna show the site plan, what was originally proposed, what the changes are. And there was also a previous minor modification to this special permit with some setback, making sure those are now on also accounted for on the site plan so we can like move holistically.
Absolutely. Um, my name's Josh Farkas.
Um, Matthew Bombacy with Boulder Engineering, civil engineer.
We have a third person, Becky Coes, joining. I just want to make sure she's logged in. I can unmute her if you give me one second. Great, Becky was gonna open up for us this evening? Yep, yep. Becky, you're unmuted, just, uh, there you go.
Okay, great. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, before you speak, uh, is there anything that I can pull up on the screen that would be helpful?
Uh, I think when, when, when Matt and Josh speak, yes. Uh, I was just gonna give a little bit of history of the, of the project. Um, my name is Becky Coes, I'm with Convergent Energy and Power. Uh, we are the, the applicant, we purchased the, the project from the previous applicant, Mad River Holdings. So we, we now own that at LLC. Um, and I'm, I'm sure you all are aware, this, this project has been before, the board previously and we're making some modifications. Um, as we, as since we purchased the project, we've been doing the detailed design, working with our, our engineer and contractor who are, who are present, uh, in the room in person there. Um, and Matt will get into the, the details of the, of the changes that we've made. But at a high level, you know, we've reduced our, our fenced area, the solar array, reducing the amount of, um, clearing and rubbing that we'll need to do. And made some improvements to the, the stormwater management design, uh, providing some grass wells and increasing the, uh, the overall basin, uh, storm, stormwater basin volume. Um, so we just wanted to, uh, give you that, that history there if you weren't aware of it. And I will, uh, turn it over to, to Matt and Josh to get into the, the details of the, the upgrade of the plant.
Yeah, because we could also pull up the narrative that lays out the, we'll go through what it is you're seeking to do.
Yep.
Is this also a transfer with the new owner?
So, uh, again, Josh Farkas, when we met with, um, Mr. Fontaine back in November, that was one of the items that was sort of on our list from that informal meeting to come in and make sure we covered that. So yeah, I think the transfer of name is part of it, the minor amendment to the application on file, um, an extension and a couple, couple of other items that were listed that we'll make sure we cover throughout the evening. Josh, is there something of, of what we have, what's the most helpful, the narrative or the site plan overlay or?
I do the overlay because we can run through that.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna take a couple of moments and I'll pass it over to Matt. So, um, professional electrical contractors, we're a design build EPC firm based in Canton, Mass. In short, I work for Becky and Matt works for us as our civil engineer. Um, and we're the team that essentially is, um, you know, taking the, the responsibility of, uh, on Becky's side, long-term ownership, on my side, um, designing, um, and building a, a project that stands with a warranty for years to come for our, for our customer. And Matt's our, our civil, our professional civil engineer. So as time has gone by, I think a number of different folks have, have been in front of you all on a number of different boards over a, a number of years. We, we represent the group that will finalize the design and build and ownership. So we've been, um, we've been working through the conservation commission the last couple of months. Um, and like I mentioned, this past November, came in to just sort of start to understand the processes in the town leading up to submitting for a building permit and tying off loose ends, taking care of some balls that may have been dropped, um, on the applicant's side in years past and just kind of right the way. So as I mentioned, currently in front of the concom, I think we, uh, anticipate one, maybe two more meetings until we work our way through that. It's going well. Um, we've received peer review comments. Um, the, the list has become much shorter in the last couple of weeks, so we're feeling good. But I'm not saying we're done there, I just, we're feeling, we're feeling good about that process and wanted to get in here tonight. Um, I, I believe, and this is a little bit of a procedural question I just wanted to start with. I think what we're here to do, um, is look for confirmation that this is in fact a minor modification. And then if all goes well tonight or in the next meeting, whenever is appropriate.
Okay, I'll just say it's not minor. You're here, you're here underneath special permit modification.
Okay.
If it was minor, it wouldn't be a hearing.
Understood, okay, so that's part of?
Yeah, so it's, this is just a modification of the permit.
Okay, a modification.
Modify the special permit and site plan.
Okay, so that might answer my question. So maybe it's just, uh, maybe, maybe we're here just for a vote to approve the modification at this point. Um, if the board deems appropriate. Okay.
Yep.
Great, all right, so Matt, I'll let you go ahead.
Yeah, sure. Uh, good evening again. For the record, Matt Bombacy with Boulder Engineering. Um, we jumped into this project when Josh brought us on board. Typically, we do jump in on some of these projects, kind of at the entitlement process. And generally, we, we have a set of approved plans and permits and we kind of advise them to, to work within it as they do their structural and electrical design. Um, this one was a little bit more unique. There was a little bit more history here for us to, to digest and some comments and some of the decisions for us to run through. So, um, our project and our design is currently submitted is completely within the previously approved limit of work, the previously approved, um, limit of all improvements. But there are some kind of reductions and improvements we made as we kind of cycled through the, the permit approvals. Um, we had met with city, city staff and Mr. Fontaine and gotten some heads up on some items and then also filed a, a new notice of intent to, to wrap everything up with conservation. It's been some minor improvements. Um, real, real briefly, I'm sure folks are aware of the project because I, I think a lot of the names here were on the decision, but 15.8 acre fenced solar array with an, an access road through the center and two stormwater basins. So what we've submitted is we've prepared an updated site plan set, which again is, is more or less similar to the previous with some modifications I'll run through. Um, we've prepared updated hydrologic calculations. Um, those are kind of a, actually a condition of the planning of board approval and something that conservation had asked for too. Um, and we've also submitted a new notice of intent to conservation as, as Josh mentioned. Um, for project modifications, again, completely within the, the previously approved limit of work, the one thing we did do is reduce the, the limit of solar array. So on the plan at the top right or the north, um, the northeast section of the array, there's a little bit of a steeper topography area there. Um, we have the option of either grading that area out or, or doing some, some earthwork to allow that for solar array or in this particular case.
Can you help identify what area you're talking about?
Yeah, sure. Um, it, the blue doesn't come out all that, all that well. But, um, if you see the kind of, to the access road that goes up the, the top center to the right of that, um, there's about 32,000 square feet that was previously part of the array. And we pulled the fence.
You're talking about right here where it says, where it says remaining land on the other side of the fence? So at the top, oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. Pause it again.
Sorry.
All right, so you were talking about the top of the access road up here?
Just down and to the right a little bit from there.
This, this area right here?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Um, so, so down there. Um, the second place we reduced the, the fence line is actually on the, on the opposite side, on the west side when we had met with, um, Chantel and, and Mr. Fontaine. I always mention that the property for 816 Ashburnham Street, I think the intention was to actually provide 125 foot buffer to that property. And that actually wasn't even, wasn't shown on the approved site plan. So at the far west corner over there, we've pulled the fence line and the limit of work in about 25 or 30 feet to respect that 125 foot buffer.
So I did have a question about?
And why does the blue line show that it's?
Yeah.
Yeah, that doesn't, it looks like.
Jacob's property, it's only 110. There's a permit condition, and I, 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 I think I mentioned this to you when we met, the, we had a disconnect with whether it was Tom or someone at Mad River. We had a disconnect when we, there was a permit condition that expresses states, there's 125 foot buffer for all property owners. And I know I brought it up because we just talked about it. The, the plan that we finally got, some of them kind of encroached a little further than that for whatever reason.
Yeah.
Um, there's still one that's 110. Do we know why that is?
Well, we did say to the Jacob's property that, and on January 24th, 2023, so this is in the minor modification, we put that in there, that it was clarified that 125 foot vegetative buffer should be shown for lots, fronting on Ashburnham Street with a minimum of 100 foot vegetative buffer to the Jacob's property at 778 Ashburnham Street. Board voted to accept applicant's site plan revision subject to submission of the documentation to the community development verifying that a minimum of 100 feet vegetative setback to be maintained to the Jacob's property. And wanted to see that then reflected on any.
Okay.
Site plan. So I remember the applicant, the, um, butter did come forward with that and said, you know, 100 feet was okay in regards, in regards to that piece, and we wanted to memorialize that. So we want to make sure in any future plan that it's, that, that it's shown as previously.
Okay, I, I didn't remember that, okay. Uh, that, as long as it's okay, I, I, like I said, I was surprised when I saw the number was there that's.
So, so this is a question back to the, on the site plan, the blue line shows it's past the black line.
So, so the blue line is the previously approved line and the black line is actually the, the current proposal? So the blue line is how it was approved on the previous plans.
But we just, but on the opposite side, we just talked about a reduction off the driveway. The blue line is the new one?
Uh, no, the, the blue line is the old one on the.
Okay, but you said it was reduced, but now it's, it looks like it's expanded then.
I think blue is a really bad choice of color. Um, so the blue line is the line that's, that extends furthest out, that was the old one.
Horizontal going across.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, I.
So, but so that doesn't seem reduced, it just seems expanded.
So your, your boundaries are beyond what was originally approved?
All right.
No.
Well, because if blue is here and black is here, your boundaries are more than what was approved.
Uh, I'm sorry, so I'm, I'm looking at the, the fence line. Um, so the, the, the line that's a kind of a dash.
I'm, I'm paused again, I apologize. Let me try that again. The blue line that's right here.
Yep.
See the blue line? And the black line that's right here?
Yep.
Black line, which is where this 110 arrow goes to, is beyond the limits of the previous limit of the blue line.
Uh, yeah, so the blue line is the previously approved fence line, not the previously.
Oh, not the limits of, okay, it's not the limit of work? So you're still within the same boundary all the way around the property?
Um, correct, except for we pulled the limit of work in at that 816.
This rounding?
Yep, correct.
Okay, so that fence line was always there?
I'm still confused.
Yeah. I have it on paper too, if it's easier, I can point, point to it.
Okay, we have the black dashed line, on the outer black dashed line, which represents what at this point?
That's the previously approved limit of work.
I can zoom in too, Joyce, if you need me to. Let me zoom in on your property. Might be. So I don't have the other plan handy right now. I can find it, but I need some time to find it. Um, and I don't know if I can do it in the meeting because.
That is, that is acceptable. And this is what we agree upon, 100 foot, this is a 110 foot to the fence line. That is what that indicates.
It is.
That's what we agree upon, that's fine.
It is. Well, we pulled this plan together as the, one of the last documents, um, to, to our submittal to try to, try to make it easy to see this and. So this.
Well, it still would have been hard separately, so I was just.
Do you want to see a copy to take a peek at it?
Uh, the electronics. Okay.
Okay.
But.
Sure.
Well, that's acceptable, it's within 100 feet, so it's acceptable.
Thank you, Joyce.
So I'm seeing, so there's three lines here. One looks like, like a, um, a wall.
Yep, so, so the dark dashed line is the, the, the limit of work with an adjustment to the 816 property. The blue line is the previously approved fence line taken right from the approved drawings.
I see it now and there's a black and blue that moves up here where this X is.
That's the new fence line.
The X is, is the, is the new fence line. So you're moving the new fence line in further away from that Otano property.
Versus, versus the no disturbed area. We just wanted to, because we were saying black, we were thinking.
Property you guys are, only because I know where Joyce lives. What's that? Is it Otano? There's a property that says Tishay and Jesus Otano that's right there. And then there's unknown owner.
Tisha's aunt has her hand raised.
Okay, okay. Tisha, I'll get to you in a second.
Uh, there's no house there. He just.
Oh, okay.
Big plan.
It's, it's on the plan is the city of Fitchburg. If there's no house there, it's between Garcia, well, Garcia's not even listed, but it's between Capone's, there's Capone's, then there's another little lot, then there's the city of Fitchburg.
I got it right here, so it's, uh, Orono? Okay, so let me show you on the plan where you are now that I know where it is.
Capone's, it's the third lot.
Right here.
Yeah. Okay.
So this, this is the lot, this is your lot right here, the one I'm circling.
Would you like to say, we, we can take your.
Okay, uh, the construction, how will it affect her property?
Good question, so, and then you want to explain about the buffer?
Yeah, sure, so the, the dark line, 125 feet in, um, from the Barack property line.
This line right here?
Yep, that's, that's the limit of work. The only work that'll occur inside that line would be any plantings for screenings like shrubs and trees that they're gonna plant to provide a, a visual buffer. But all the other work and improvements will be completely on the other side of that line.
So.
From that black line? From that line to her property line? 125 feet?
Correct.
There should be veget, veget, you're planting vegetation.
The residential buffer, um, plan that will be the only work that would incur inside that area.
From the back of your property line where it ends, 125 feet deep, they're gonna be restoring that back to vegetative trees and whatever.
Okay, since there's no, nothing in her property, if, is there any chance?
Pull the microphone down a little bit.
Is there any chance that they're gonna be like either driving through there, putting some stuff there, anything that can affect her property because there's nothing built in there yet?
On your property? They are not legally allowed to be on your property at all, ever. It's private, your property's private property, they cannot drive on your property.
Work to put a detention basin in. Would, would it affect in any way, um, once she built her, her home?
How so?
Um, we're just wondering because since there is nothing there, we don't know what's gonna happen from now since the construction starts to when she is able to build a house there.
So it would not affect her property. What's going on behind her property is they're gonna, they're gonna put, be, after her property line, they're gonna be put more plantings in as a screen. At their property line, where you see the black line there, they're putting in the detention basin to hold stormwater. So hopefully hold stormwater from then coming down, further down the hill. Plus you'll have the vegetation to, to prevent stormwater from running off to her property.
Okay.
That's the, that's the goal.
The expectation is, with this plan, the expectation is that although there have been missteps from the prior developer that caused some runoff, the expectation is that the work that they do to restore the, the mistakes that were made as well as the stormwater work that they're gonna do, it should make this, whatever situation is there now, it should make it better, but definitely is not allowed to make it worse.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we do have a hand raised while we're on public comment. Tisha Otono, I believe, you're welcome to speak, you can just press the, here you go.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, let me go to your side of the plan now, if you bear with me for one second.
Mm-hmm.
So, you are up here on this corner, yep.
Yes, so, my name is Tishay, nice to meet you guys. I have had in the last, well, this year since this construction has been going on, I've had a lot of like downfall water, so I've had a lot of that water in my driveway, which has ruined my driveway, it's like basically like a river going through one side of my driveway, that it's now going into my basement. So, I wanted to make sure that that is resolved, because I've never had an issue with that. And I've seen a couple of properties, like before mine, water has been going right through their yard as well.
Okay.
And it's only started happening since this construction's been going on.
Okay.
And I just don't want it to get worse, because it's coming out of my pocket.
Okay, well, we'll have the applicant discuss that. Do you, do you have any idea, are there any plans with this stormwater that handles that side of the site?
To a certain extent, we focused, most of the water from the site does come down on the other side, but there's a portion at the north, the northwest portion there, which which does, we have a proposed swell along the, along that whole side, which will direct that water into the, into the basin rather than through. It looks like there's other areas offsite that may may flow through the Otono property too, so I don't want to say there's no water that might come come through there, but we're gonna catch everything coming off.
Yeah, so we, sorry to interrupt, we do have a stream, like we've always had like a little stream, but it's never been a river, you know, like it's never been, I've never had any water go through my driveway. I mean, I just had my driveway last summer, they put stone in it, and my stone is like, my driveway's like kind of washed out, there's like nothing there, I mean, any, anyone that drives, anybody from the city of Pittsburgh, I'm sure knows, because they did like make a hole across the street where there's like another stream or a river, where the water could flow that way.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so it's a, it's a pretty like bad thing, it's never happened before, you know what I mean?
So, do you think a swell is adequate to address this?
So, a couple of comments, Becky's team has met with some of the abutters, I think Ms. Jacobs has kind of organized some of the conversations, I don't know if Ms. Otono was part of those conversations, I'm curious if if she has joined in on any of that to date? I know sometimes it's.
I have never spoken to her.
Yeah, I don't believe.
Okay, well, we're happy to, we're happy to have that discussion with you, it's hard to rally, there's probably twelve or fifteen neighbors, we thought we had heard from everybody who had concerns, like this is a new name that we haven't spoken to yet.
No, I've been reaching out, but I mean, I really didn't know where to reach out to anyone.
Sure.
So, this, I got this letter and I made sure that I was here tonight.
Perfect.
Very good.
Because I wanted to, I wanted to remedy this situation, because it's hurting my house.
Yeah.
Well, this, this is the forum for that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm sure, I'm sure Joyce can attest as well, as I just learned two weeks ago from flooding in my basement, which has never happened in the forty-five years the house has been there, that there are unprecedented things happening right now regardless, but certainly it's good to let them know to see if it's something that they can fix.
Yeah, well, you know, like usually, I mean, like I've had this house for five years, and in the five years I've had it this year, since, since they started doing whatever they're doing back there, I think they're taking trees down, and since, you know, I have, my house is full of trees behind my, my house, that just all that water that usually goes into that stream, it's so much that it can't handle all that water that's coming down home.
Right.
You know, from that, from that area.
Okay.
So, I've never had, I've never had a river in my driveway.
Perfect, well, hopefully we'll let them, have them look into it, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Go ahead, Joyce.
If I can just add, the day that we did the site visit when Becky was out and we walked the properties, Mrs. Otono, I don't think was available, they worked during the day in that ever, but there was water running off the hill, and Becky did walk up so that she could see where the flow was coming there, now how, if if that modified the plan at all, I'm not sure, but she did start by the property so she could see what that water was doing.
Mm-hmm.
Was not able to talk to the property owner, but did see it.
And so, what is this?
Yeah, we did take a look at that, at that, maybe it would be helpful if you brought up the grading plan that shows the swell that's capturing the runoff, running behind the Otono property?
Yeah.
What is the status of detention basins in this work, because it's like, I understand, you know, trees are, land is being cleared, but it's like that should, no installation of solar or prep until this stormwater and other aspects are done, and I, you know, perfectly, we understand that things were done ahead of time to some degree, so those have to be mitigated and is kind of paramount priority.
I know that was a condition of the previous order of conditions, and I'm very strongly suspect there'll be a condition of the current order of conditions, that stormwater basins are constructed substantially before any array goes in, so I don't think we've really been on site yet for construction, but I think we expect that to be the first thing that we, that we do out there.
Yeah, really, the the upcoming months, weeks, whatever it may be, would start with a building permit application, hopefully approval, and then we would, you know, line up mobilization at this point, you know, July fourth, you know, plus or minus is where we're thinking we'll, we'll be mobilizing to the site, you know, that there's processes involved in getting with, getting those permits, but then we would meet that condition of starting with those basins to stabilize the the stormwater, which really is what this site's all about, for the neighbors, for the town and for everything. So, I think Matt's plan from Bowler, that's been in front of Concom, like that's been the focus in the calculations and adding the basins, I know we've mostly focused on fence line in the first couple of minutes here tonight, we can certainly pop that up on the screen if we want to take a look at it, but like I said, I think we're, I think we're getting there with Concom, and the plans before you are the same that they have right now. Yeah, and, 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 Tisha, is it how you pronounced it?
It's Tishay.
Tisha, the, some of these questions, particularly when they pertain to wetlands, like if you can see the plan that's up in front of me right now, so, so your property's here, the, the edge of work is, is kind of in this area, so I think that there's a significant portion of wetlands behind your house, that cheap flows to your house, I'm not a wetlands person, but what I was gonna suggest is that you might want to join into the Concom meetings.
Okay.
They, they might be, they certainly will have more knowledge as far as what runoff is, where it goes, aside from our stormwater plan and drainage, which is, looks to be, and correct me if I'm wrong, guys, looks to be mostly from her site south, you know, there's a significant portion behind her site that you're not touching.
Correct.
Which might be the wetlands that we're talking about, that, that might impact her property.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't want to give you the wrong answer, but it might be helpful to follow along, Joyce, when's the next Concom meeting?
Uh, next week, actually.
Next Tuesday?
Wednesday, so, we've been meeting on Wednesday night, it's May third, I think is Wednesday, and the wetlands that you're seeing above that property is not part of the Danufil, what was the Danufil property, that's actually owned by Jaco up on McIntyre.
Yep.
There's a pond at the bottom of Tom's field, and so, their property at eight sixteen has really been a combination, some of it is coming off of the hill where the solar field is going, some of it is coming off of Jaco's field, and it's just a condition of what the weather has been over the last two years, and so the flow.
Yeah, it's, it's really bad, like I, I know, I know what you're saying, but I've never seen it like as bad as it is this, like recently.
I hear you, it's, we're unfortunately hearing that a lot. Yeah, I, I do believe the swell that sits between Tishay's property and the site is probably the most significant and relevant piece to just take a peek at.
You're talking about right, this swell right here that shows right along.
Yeah, Matt can speak to that, I believe that was not on the original plans a couple of years ago, and then the basin just south of that has been, has been enlarged since, and, yep. This, this basin right here is where they're directing the water that that's part, that's near their site, they're directing the water to go, just, so that's what this big, that's what this big area here is, which is right behind the Jacobs property. And then just that outlet right there, that flows to a different wetland.
Yeah.
So, it's meant to capture the water that essentially would be working its way toward your home, into the basin, then through an outlet pipe into the, into the wetland, just beneath it.
Yeah.
Did you?
So, the meeting is Wednesday, you said?
Next Wednesday, six P M., right?
Yes, Wednesday night, the third at six P M.
Okay, and that's in person and virtual?
Yes, you can sign on the same as you did tonight also, so you can come in person or sign on virtual.
Wednesday's the first.
Oh, Wednesday's the first, okay, excuse me, May first.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have changes to the limits of the solar array.
And I'll quickly run through the stormwater improvements, I know that's probably, probably the main focus, so, we've updated hydraulic calculations, the things that we did to update it was we used the Cornell University extreme precipitation data rather than the old TP-40 data, the TP-40 data is, I guess, the, the regulatory requirement, but Cornell, as I think we're talking about now, is more accurate, we're seeing a lot greater rain events in the, the more accurate data, so, we updated the calc, which provided a more conservative or, or more rainfall modeled off the site, we increased the volume of the stormwater basins about seventy-three hundred cubic feet or a hundred twenty-five percent, just, honestly, we just expanded it as much as we thought we could, we also adjusted the basins, they were buried quite a bit into the ground as part of the previous plan, like into the ledge and groundwater, so, got them up as high as we could just to promote infiltration, we're proposing about fourteen hundred fifty linear feet of like grassed, stabilized grass channels and, and riprap, and the purpose of those are actually largely related to Ms. Otono's comment, which is, the problem when we find out here is, is kind of a civil engineer's nightmare, is there's nowhere for the water to go, under existing conditions, the water just comes down the hill, through people's property and out into the street, and then honestly, really nowhere from there, so, any place we saw an opportunity to grab water, instead of routing it through someone's property, routing it around the edge of our array and then out through the outlet we had, we did it, so, that's the swell that we're looking at there, over on the other side of the property, there's three or four properties that have a lot of water that comes through them under existing conditions, the previous plan had a pipe outlet right out there, we just grabbed that, routed it around our array down the, down the gravel road, and it ultimately ends up in the same spot, but instead of going through the residential property first, it comes through our array, so, there's a greater watershed here, we grabbed basically everything we could within our, our, our limit of array, just to try to get in and route it around.
There is one more hand raised, just a second.
Okay. Thank you.
Deb, Deborah Garcia, you're welcome to speak if you'd like.
Um, yes, the last time that they came to the property, when they came and they looked at our property, they mentioned that where my house is, and I guess it's here, the one they're saying is Jeffrey Hensel.
This one right here?
Yeah, six sixty, that's my, I, it doesn't have the street address, but I'm assuming looking at.
Hold on one second, I, I can look it up through.
Yeah, Paul, it is six sixty.
Okay, yeah, I was just trying to, yeah, okay, that is, that is the parcel we're talking about, I just want to, I want to make sure we're talking about the right one, yes, it's this one right here.
So, the last time they, they came and they, they walked through the property with us and it was raining, of course, Joyce had, had also joined us, and they're, they were saying that because of where the line is, of where the project is happening and where my property is, that some of the water issues are because of the wetlands that are over there, but we weren't having those problems prior to the, the construction, and you can see my, the whole back of my house up on that property has no trees now, just what, what's there on my side of the property has the trees on that, that land area there, and so I just don't understand how they can say that only part of this is affecting my property. Am I, am I making myself clear?
I don't know, I was gonna say, to the north of your property, and correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like you're installing a detention basin?
Yeah, I guess.
It's not installed yet?
If, if you could help me, is, is she in the A-frame house, or is she in the driveway?
No, the floor is down.
Yeah, yeah, so I know, when I was out there, I don't want to speak for discussions that were had previously, the A-frame house was really the house that I saw that was like, it was hard to do anything about, because there's a wetland with the stream that comes down, really, it terminates at the back of the property, we can't fill the wetland or re, rewrite the wetland or anything like that, her, her house, I mean, I think there is some area of that wetland that does, does write there, but when I was out there walking around, I did see there was an area, the topo kind of shows it where swells down into her backyard, so we are, we did extend that basin from the previous plan as far east as we could, just to the very limit of work to collect as much water as we could coming off that hill, so, again, that property and then any property to the, to the west of that were the ones we were really trying to capture, so, I guess I, I don't want to make, make promises that none, none of the water from that wetland might not, not work as that way, but I think there is a section of topo that currently kind of swells down into that property that we're capturing, in addition to the revegetation.
Can I ask a question, because I'm curious, in my head, the timeframe, you guys might not know this, but you, Joyce might, do we know when, what, what year, month those trees were cleared?
Twenty twenty-one.
I know it's been a while, that's why I asked.
The original plan was approved in twenty nineteen, the tree cutting went in, in twenty, twenty-one, and then we started talking about the restoration and all of that in twenty twenty-two and twenty-three, and that's when it starts to hit the plans that we're talking about now.
Okay, I was just trying to, I'm trying to get my head around the time, I know it's, like I said, I know it's been so long.
Yeah.
The, the, the issues we ran into last winter, I think, with the, the, the freezing on the street, I know Nick Erickson had mentioned that to me, has that been somewhat rectified?
No.
No?
And until, unfortunately, I think until they can get in there and start to build the detention basins and get the swells created, you know, again, it's a combination of everything, we've had a lot of water, the wetlands are full, the water is coming off the hill, the vegetation's been disturbed, so, until they can start working, it's probably not gonna be remediated at all.
Okay.
And it's not just in the wintertime, I'd say in the summer, even now, I mean, the water flow is so thick, it's still kind of dangerous, just going through these huge puddles up on the corners.
Yeah, we, I mean, they're, they're gathering in front of my house.
Yeah.
We had, I did call the D P W, and they did come, and they, they dug out the drains that were backing up in the, on the, when you're not facing my house, when you're facing my house on the right side.
Yep.
So, they, they did dig that out, but even now, because the water is still coming, right, the, the, there's, I guess there's a drain in my driveway, I've asked them to come out and look at it, to see if it belongs to, if it's something that has to do with us or has to do with the city, but I have yet to have anybody come out here, just so we know, you know, we're, we're currently draining it now, because the water is a constant backup in our driveway, which runs down into the street, which causes a big puddle, because it, the street's not leveled.
Sure.
And it's not going down to the, to the drive.
Sure.
So, they, they did come and they did fix that, but it's, I don't think it's complete, and then we have on the left side of the house, a trench that we had to dig from the back of our property, where the water is running down the, the hill onto our property into our backyard, because there was a, a pond developing, so we had to build a trench on the edge of what is, I guess, the neighbor's property to run off into the street, so that's also causing more water into the street, which is causing potholes to develop.
Yeah, that's a terrible spot on Route twelve.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's, you know, and, and our next door neighbors as well.
Yeah, certainly.
They're having a heck of a time too.
Yep.
Kate and Louis.
Yep, I hear you, okay.
So, we just would really like to get this remedied as quickly as property possible.
I noticed the data transfer from when you bought the property, how, and this is just a curiosity question, how forthcoming were the real estate agents about what was going on at that site and the issues that were happening at that time?
Well, we were not aware of issues, that we were only told that they were putting the, the solar up in the back of the property, which we had no problem with that.
Mm-hmm.
But at that time, we were told there were no water issues.
Okay, I was just curious, I, I was curious, I, I also don't remember exactly when everything started falling apart, I think it was short, very shortly after they took the trees down, but it's neither here nor there, I, just a curiosity question.
Yeah, we bought the house in late twenty twenty-two.
Yep, yep.
And everything seemed to be fine then, it wasn't until after that following the spring that everything started falling apart for us.
Okay.
We've had constant water in the basement, as well as Kate and Louis, as well as Joyce, as well as, I guess, Tisha, you know, and then, and then just the, the continuous runage, you know, and that's the other thing too, because now we're being told that that part of the water problem is not caused by what's happening up on the solar area, but I, I don't necessarily agree with that, because you can see how far the trees have been removed on that side of the property.
Yeah, it's just adding more to the wetland capacity area, it's just overflowing.
Yeah, and I think it did, it went into the wetland area, so, which is coming over.
I would imagine you've heard this fact, but, and it's no consolation to you now, but those trees were taken down by the property owner who was.
Oh, yeah.
Who was the, who was the relative of the applicant, who did it against everyone's wishes and caused all these problems, so. and caused all these problems. So it's, again, no, no consolation, but those trees shouldn't have been taken down.
The problem is that we don't know what we're supposed to do.
I hear you.
That's just, you know.
Okay.
Yep.
Just a few comments I wanted to make. From our perspective, we've, we've probably, Matt and I have probably been looking at this site for 15, 16 months at this point. We've done a lot of site visits. A couple of the things that we did, you'll notice on the plan, you can see kind of some ledge outcroppings. You know, we, we were concerned about excavating basins on this site because there's rock everywhere. So we did a survey to identify where all that rock was, where, we sort of learned that we need to raise up the basins because digging down into the ground is going to be challenging. And then we also did a geotechnical investigation, test pits, to see what the groundwater levels were at. And those two things really led to this plan, which, just to kind of reiterate the extra swales and the larger basins. So we're taking this very seriously. We've, we've, we've been to these meetings, we've, we've heard what's going on. We're here to, to build this thing as opposed to get a permit through development, so to speak. We're, we're really, that's what's top of mind for us and we take this stuff really seriously. We've, normally we, normally Matt and I find a project and in 60 days, we have a design and we're building. This has been a, a different process and that's totally fine. But we do, we do take this very seriously. We're not, we're, we're here to build it. We're not here to kind of close the development door and then let someone else deal with that. Like, we kind of are that someone else, as is, as is Convergent who bought the project and, and have hired us.
So Madam Chair, if I can, and this may kind of address, and I don't want to get ahead of Matt's presentation here, but it may help address the Garcias and everybody's issue with some of the water. What I haven't seen in the new plans today is what we talked a lot about here was the tree planting. The only planting schedule that we see in this plan right now is wildlife mixes and grass seed. The wetlands and the upland, the restoration plan that was done by ERM, we had a specific detailed plan of 518 trees that were to be planted all along the back of their houses. So that would help everybody, including the Garcias. Is that still in place? Because it's not indicated anywhere here.
Yeah, I think it's part of the, the previous decision is, is baked in as a reference plan or improvement for that decision. We didn't put it on our plans. We just want to duplicate the same information twice. It could lead to error, but the expectation is that planting plan is still part of the.
Was that part of our plan or was that the CONCOM?
No, that was part of planning.
I don't remember, I don't, I mean, I remember a conversation, but I don't remember, I don't know, could be bad memory. I don't remember.
Madam Chair, if I can, I'll just.
We're absolutely going to install those plantings, for sure.
Because the plan isn't in here, but it's, as long as I'm reading the prior decision.
Do you have it? Sure.
I do, I do, I do remember this now that you showed it to me. I remember the tree schedule now that you showed it to me.
But was that in?
That was in.
That was in the modification.
Of the 2022 plan. Actually, the earlier one.
July, July 7th, 23 modification.
Right, July 7th, then it was registered.
Stormwater management plan, stormwater report prepared by Timothy A. Coon, P.E., to determine if any modifications are required in light of the logging operation that occurred. And I assume this was part of that.
Yep.
And then DPW response to stormwater management plan. Those were the exhibits from the 23 approval. And we have a pretty good.
I only have the 23 approval as May.
Yeah, then there was one in August.
July 7th, 2023 is in our packet.
Yeah.
It was recorded in the registry, 83023.
Yep.
It's a modification to 202207 from May. It says from May, but it's not. It's a July, well, the meeting might have been May.
That's the meeting. I'm talking, the meeting was in May.
Yes, that's, that's what that, that's what this is from. That's what this is from.
But I don't see it as listed as material.
So it's, I, part of the stormwater management plan, I believe.
But in addition to the swales and the detention basin and just to make sure that the tree planting was still as part of that, not just grass and, you know, that kind of thing, bark, bark mulch or whatever, that hopefully is going to also help mitigate a lot of this runoff.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. I mean, I would just say, just as part of this approval, just resubmit the.
It's the 2022 restoration plan.
Okay.
There's also, just remind the applicant too, there's three month submission, check-ins of updates of what's happening on the site.
Is that, is that once the construction has commenced? That, that was sort of how we were discussing that internally. I know, I know that some logging was done.
Typically, it is, but it's like.
Yeah.
With, it's, whatever's, I guess, happening or not happening now. I mean, your permit's in effect. So it's like, you know, no, no work at this time or what, what's going on.
And, and you're right, Paul, I'm looking at.
Because now we're here, we're hearing it's going to take till July. So just an expectation so everybody knows what your, the times, timing schedule is or activities.
That's fine. Most of the timeline for July is actually driven on how long we think it will take to receive a building permit and, and be approved to mobilize. That, that's, we're, we're probably assuming that takes 30 to 45 days. I know that there's departmental reviews and this is a complicated project where we probably get a couple of phone calls to talk, have this conversation with other boards.
And just.
But quarterly submissions, just to be clear, not a problem at all.
And on April 7th, 2023, the property was conveyed from John de Newville to McIntyre Hill LLC. That's the property owner. Is there a new applicant other than Mad River Solar? Because then in the documentation, you said, you said on behalf of the applicant, Mad River Solar Holdings LLC. So.
So Convergent, the land, yeah, the landowner is still, is still.
McIntyre?
John de Newville, yes. At McIntyre. We are Convergent, who now is the owner of Mad River Solar Holdings. We purchased the project, is leasing the land from.
What's, what's the name? Because I, I don't see any document.
Mad River Solar Holdings.
But she said this was purchased. So who's the company that purchased it?
The project company, the LLC Mad River Holdings was purchased by Convergent. So I think the applicant remains Mad River Holdings. It's a different, different ownership of the applicant, exactly.
What was the name, but what was the name? We have, I just don't have any document.
Convergent, is that what you said?
Convergent Energy and Power. That's who Becky works for.
So Convergent Energy and Power is the parent company that now owns Mad River Holdings LLC.
So I'd like some documentation of.
Yep.
That because it's going to be also documented about who's, who owns what.
Kind of like a shell thing, you know?
Well, yes, as you can see, the, I'm trying to keep a ledger.
So, so that's, so, so the actual technical applicant, Mad River Solar Holdings LLC, is still the current applicant. So there is no change of owner, there's no change of applicant. So we don't need, there's a, there's a change of owner of the applicant, but there's no change of applicant. The applicant's the same, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay. So that clarifies that. Just provide proof that you own it and then we'll be fine on that, right?
Yes.
Provide proof that you own the company and then we're fine in that regard.
Just give us the.
Same puppet, different.
I was under the impression you were going to come in front of the planning board and it was going to be a whole new applicant name.
Contact information, property owner information, that kind of thing with that, so that we all know who the principal is.
Absolutely.
We also, and always have to double check if the LLC or the corporation is registered in the state of Massachusetts to do business. So make sure you're, they're registered in the, underneath the Mass Corporation website.
Yeah, we are.
You are, good.
I'm just checking for you right now, Paula.
Yeah, I already have it up.
We talked about that before coming in tonight.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We triple checked.
I make a point.
I have a checklist for you, Paula. I didn't, I, we don't forget. All right.
You'd be surprised how many times that seems to be occurring.
I've made that mistake many years ago.
It's like we want to issue a permit and it's to which entity that's not registered.
Nothing makes you feel sillier when you get sent home with that.
Everybody has to pay their $500 fee.
So there's, so I have no, I, I didn't see any department comments for anyone for this. Do we, do we need any information? I mean, obviously, the, the CONCOM's doing the, 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 I think at this point, after we did the restoration plan, they're doing the brunt of the work to, to solve whatever happened on site with, I know, you know, all the tracks and all the stuff that happened on site.
Making these stormwater improvements, have you passed, it was by the DPW at all for the stormwater, any updates to the stormwater?
We have, yeah. We've submitted them to DPW and been coordinating with them all along. It seems like every time we submit to them, there's an eight-in terrain event. So that's not typically top of their mind. And I know they've been participating in conservation. I think they're leaning a little bit on the, the peer review is my hunch, but, but they've had copies of it. And I know we need to file a stormwater permit with them.
We had that previously as a condition also for submitting for stormwater updates for DPW. Because also it could be another condition as well, if there's any subsequent.
And we have been working with DPW and both of us are relying on the peer review for the analysis of the information that's been provided to CONSCOM to make sure that the stormwater calculations are correct. And that's where we've been going back and forth.
So there's a peer review in process?
Yep.
Through CONCOM?
Yep.
Okay. Great.
And I have one more question, if I may, Madam Chair. On Plan C2, it just says, because this is different than the last plans, that 17,280 square feet of exposed rock area are to be remu, removed. Will that be blasting or jackhammer? Just so that we can, residents will know.
Yeah, we don't plan to blast. It's, it's, I, I've actually, I've been in this business for about 10 years. I've never been on a project where we did blasting. The plan would be a rock hammer. It's, it's like an excavator with a pick on the end.
Okay.
So that's the plan. But yeah, those are the outcroppings that you see within the, within the array area.
I'm glad you bring that up, Joyce, because that leads to the most important question of, how long are we anticipating hammering for and where's the material going? How much material do you anticipate to have to remove if you have to remove it? Or are you using it on site?
So I don't, I don't have a perfect answer. I can, I can give you a general answer.
General answer is fine.
If that's good enough. Generally, you know, the, these machines are very expensive. So you, you tend to bring them out when you need them and then get rid of them as quickly as you can and kind of move it around the site. I wouldn't expect it to be more than a couple of weeks for this site with the amount of takeoff we have as far as using that material. Matt, I don't know if you can speak to that?
Yeah, we do have some areas that are, that are a little steeper, some steeper slopes along the driveways are coming up. So I think honestly, we probably try to use that to reinforce those slopes or build some small landscape walls.
Okay. So my, so my expectation and, and if we, when we're ready to make a decision would be that we mirror what I think the ZBA correctly did for an earlier decision tonight, which is blasting, I mean, rock hammering is only allowed Monday to Friday, nine to five. And we limit the timeframe to a month or less. And if you need more, you have to come back and tell us how long you need. That way we, we don't have neighbors that have to deal with this. We just got done with a project where it was almost 20 years worth of rock hammering, so.
Yeah. 20 what of rock?
20 years.
Yeah. Oh, wow.
I think it was 18, 15, 18, something like.
Yeah, sounds like a big project.
Yeah, well, different problems for different days.
Sure.
So I think I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any further, both board have any questions?
No. I, I mean, obviously, we covered the brunt of this with the restoration issues, which we did in 22 and 23. I mean, at this point, I think quicker gets started, the quicker gets done.
Yeah, I had maybe just two things on our list we haven't talked about. The, actually, it's, it's just one thing. It's the extension, the timeline. We're here for that. Excuse me. We're here for that as well.
So what are you seeking for an extension? What was it and what are we seeking for a change?
So it was current, the permit currently ran until August 15th, I think, of this year. So talking with Josh, I think the, the construction timeline probably heads into next spring. There's always potential unforeseen things like maybe the grass hasn't, we, were restabilized, some vegetation in the spring and things like that. So I don't know how long the, honestly, the board's allowed to grant an extension. I guess two years would certainly cover us. And if it's, it's a year, we may need to come back just to do any final cleanup pieces.
I guess we're, what's, I guess, your construction timeline?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's nine to 12 months, depending on if we can keep going. And when we hit the winter of 25, like January 25, will we keep going or, or leave the site for a couple of months while it's, while there's snow on the ground. A, a year from July is very, very good possibility, you know, weather permitting. I think we would need more time than that. But I, I think a year would, would put us in a good position to mobilize and feel like we could finish the project and then maybe come back in in the home stretch and extend at that point if you, if you'd like to see us at that point or if you'd rather give more time, we're fine either way.
I mean, we're going to get quarterly updates anyway. Do you want to split the difference, say 18 months? And then if they're not done in 18 months, they come back for, explain why it hasn't, why it's not done, what's left to be done. Again, we're going to hopefully be getting quarterly updates anyway. Just a suggestion.
Any question?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
So because we've done this in the past, we don't want it to fall in the middle of nowhere. Let's see, year is April, six months is October, so October of 25. Let's see, October of 25, our meeting will be with no changes, the 28th, October 28th, 2025.
I'll write it in ink.
You just might want to say the 31st.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. I just, you know, you know, you know you never want it to fall before, like, a week before a planning board date. That's all, the only reason why I bring that up, because we've had that happen in the past and it's a nightmare.
Sometimes you've changed it and it was like an off by a day or two.
Mm-hmm. Right, exactly. Yeah, we changed, changed the planning board day, yeah, which is certainly a possibility. Yeah, October 31st is a good idea.
Sometime in October at the latest.
I, I, two things, just as an aside. One is keep track of the timeframes in the quarterly reports that you have to give us. It's far worse if we have to ask because that means there's a reason why we have to ask or, you know, we, it's hard for us to keep track of them. It's up to the applicant to keep track of them. And the other thing is if and when there's a new special permit drawn up that you record in the registry deeds.
Yep.
Also, any expectation for blasting that you give advance notice?
I would.
And also for the abutters?
I, I would say that the permit condition to this would be rock hammering only within a 30 month, within a 30-day period, Monday to Friday, nine to five. If rock blasting or extended hammering is required, they have to come back to us before that.
No, I understand that. But when they, before they commence doing it, they need to notify.
Oh, hammering. You said blasting, okay. Right, hammering. They, they tell the abutters. I agree completely.
Tell the abutters until, because we want to be heads up, we're going to be getting.
For hammering, yeah.
Complaints could be coming in. And so there's expectation of, yes, we understand this is in progress and.
Identify the window of, of that 30 days of rock.
Exactly. When it to commence so that everybody gets a heads up to expectation.
Yes. Paula, and I ask this because I genuinely don't know, is there any information that we need that prohibits a decision tonight? I mean.
I don't think so, since it's just, it's a modification.
Yeah, so that's what I was thinking. And that's part of the reason why I said that is, you know, obviously, I would, the applicant is aware and I, I can tell in looking at the plans, you've, it looks like you've, you've moved those detention basins and the swales to try and do as much as you can. Just keep the abutters comments tonight, especially the new comments in mind with whatever you decide to do and whatever you can do to mitigate, you know, any runoff would be, you know, appreciative. You guys jumped into a situation that, you know, our, I've played, I've set my anger aside because the applicant is no longer with us that was involved. But there was, there was quite the frustration with the site for many, you know, many years. So whatever you can do to, you know, help these abutters, that would be greatly appreciated.
I've seen it firsthand. It's, I'd be happy if we can do an improvement. That'd be, that'd be great.
Great.
And since you're already working with, normally because of this type of situation, we would get the DPW and be working hand in hand already with DPW and also through CONCOM. So I think we have the bases covered and the conditions also cover that.
I agree, yep.
All right.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made to close the hearing. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say oppose. Roll call vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Melin?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Discussion?
No, I mean, other than my, the comments about blasting, I mean, excuse me, the comments about rock hammering, as I already mentioned twice, and the timeframe that, we keep that in, the, the times of the permit, my suggestion would be 18 months till the end of October 2025 with quarterly reviews, which were already part of the prior decision. A quarterly, I should, not quarterly reviews, quarterly status updates. But aside from that, I don't know if you had anything else specific?
No, just adherence to the restoration plan.
Right, subject to all our other prior decisions, yeah.
And any other modifications that are going to come forward from the CONCOM?
Does a new special permit, is that, is a new one issued with a new list of conditions?
It's going to be a modification that, just like your last one, that. It's going to be a modification that, just like your last one, that only had like three or four conditions or two or three conditions. It's going to have the new conditions and refer back to the other permits saying those are still valid and.
Yep.
I assume it's.
It should, it should be a roll-up of.
Yeah, okay.
This is where it started. This has been the prior modifications. This is the modifications requested now. This is what we've approved, and then still subject to all the past.
Yep.
Conditions. Just trying to.
Makes sense.
Sure. And then filing the, the decision once it's done to be effective.
I'll put that all in the form of a motion, modification of the special permit.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say oppose. Roll call vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
I do have to say that I very much appreciate your professionalism and how you guys handled the situation. It's been difficult, so good job so far. Now the hard part, construction.
Yep.
You look good.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We have some other business this evening. One is seeking our project review and signature.
We have a very patient Dr. Baker that's.
I'm an authorized member of the planning board for municipal planning board notification. I'm not sure if that has to be due with the MVP.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Are you, are we doing the Nashville River right now?
We can do that?
Yeah, Dr. Baker's on here.
Is that, is that item number two as well?
No, that's item number one.
Okay, got it. Yes, Dr. Baker?
Okay. It is all yours when you are ready.
Okay, I've unmuted myself. How do I show my slides?
Okay. Let me see here if I can make you a panelist. Dan, just making him a panelist, is that enough?
Is this, I'll just mention, is there, are you seeking any outcome at the end of this, or is this more of an FYI from the presentation? Is there any action you're seeking from the board?
Okay, thanks, Dan. He, he got remuted when he joined as a panelist, so wait one second. Dr. Baker, I don't know if you saw that, there we go.
And you see my slides now?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
So my first question was if you were seeking any type of approval or recommendation from the planning board from the presentation, or is this more of an overall informational presentation?
It's the latter.
Okay.
But I appreciate your, your willingness to stay so late and, and hear me.
We, we appreciate your patience.
It's fine. I found a lot of the meeting very interesting. You know, I served on the CONSCOM for five years up until recently.
Yep.
Heard a lot of this before.
Yep.
I wanted to update you on the Nashville River Watershed Association's Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Project, which actually got awarded by the state to the city of Pittsburgh, but the city is having NRWA be the coordinator for the project. So let's see, how do I advance the slides? Oh, I see. Okay, sorry about that. This is a project at a watershed scale to explore the potential for nature-based solutions to be applied to address climate change, and we've heard a lot about that just in the last few minutes. Solutions to what specifically? Well, flooding, drought, just if you remember, just two years passed, we actually had a severe drought here, but the last couple of years have been very wet. And also heat island effects are, are a big concern, especially in urban settings. And nature-based solutions can be many things. Anything we can do to improve the ability of water, rainwater, to infiltrate into the ground and not encounter impervious surfaces is going to help greatly with mitigating, ameliorating the worst effects of flooding and drought, actually, ironically. I'll get into that, but things like deep paving, putting in special features that can better infiltrate water, such as rain gardens and bio swales, increasing the biodiversity of our landscape. You know, lawns are not very good surfaces for preventing runoff. It's much better to, to have native plants and forests ideally, and if we get rid of them, as happened in, in a number of place, too many places in the city recently, we've lost about 5% of our forest cover just in the past five years, I'd estimate. That greatly exacerbates runoff. We can do that by a lot of methods, such as land acquisition or protecting riparian buffers, daylighting streams that have been gone underground. A lot of you probably aware that Punch Brook and Sand Brook and Birch Brook are just a few of the largest streams running through the city that now run underground, and they're not going to have the capacity in the, in the underground piping to handle a major flood such as the one that happened in, in Lemonster in September. God forbid what's going to happen when, the next time we have a major flood like that and it hits downtown Pittsburgh. So we need to really work urgently to try to protect our existing forest land and wetland and agricultural land, too. And we can do a lot to alleviate urban heat islands through green roofs. I, I saw above Main Street, looking down on your, your aerial photos, a lot of black roofs. They, they absorb heat from the sun. We need more urban tree canopy shading, and all the things that are listed here can make a, a big effect. But moving along, we've just run a program through this, this project where we've had community meetings, including in Pittsburgh, Lemonster, Ashburnham, Pepperill, and Groton, and we solicited a lot of advice from, from city officials and residents and, and collected a lot of really great information. And there was a site visit day held, one in each municipality. Unfortunately, nobody from the planning board was, was present, but I can describe what we had. We had the BSC Group, a consulting firm, who brought an ecologist, a landscape architect, and an engineer to each of the candidate sites that had been pre-selected based on city and, and resident input, and they're going to produce a nature-based solutions toolkit, which is going to contain maps, data, and generic recommendations for what could follow in terms of design and implementation. And doing all this can greatly facilitate the ability to, for the city to get grant funding to, to pay for these. So, and some examples, we looked at Park Hill Park, which you can see in the center, running from Memorial Middle School in the lower right, up to the upper left through the park and the, the sports part of the park, but also the forested part of the park. Sand Brook actually does run above ground through this CCC era, 1930s era, stoned-in area with lots of little bridges and ponds, which is dilapidated and needs to be restored in some kind of a more ecological and hydrologically appropriate way. And, you know, in the, in the interest of time, I'm going to skip this next, the, the picture on the right. Very interesting concept that, you know, a lot of these, these nature-based solutions that I just described, folks, are, are small and, and won't have a really hugely consequential effect, but there are some things that we can do that will be consequential. And, and I brought to the attention of the group Greens Pond and Putts Pond, Putman's Pond, which are on that Fallula Brook basin, which results in, in flooding downstream at, at John Fitch Highway. Those are municipally-owned wetlands, quite large, and I proposed, and Nick Erickson and Liz Murphy were present, as well as others, and I proposed that rather than take these dams out, which are really not functioning in any of the original reasons that they were put in, we could replace them with leaky dams, and the benefit of that would be to increase the flood storage capacity in those wetlands significantly. And then after a major flood event, the water would be released slowly over a few weeks, and that could greatly mitigate downstream flooding in the John Fitch Highway area. And it's something to explore. It's not necessarily a planning board issue, but it's the kind of thing that I wanted to educate you guys a little bit about. We looked at Green Acres. Green Acres is a, is the city's largest public housing project, as you probably know, and the city is thinking of taking down some of the buildings that are sick buildings, replacing them, but there's a possibility of doing more, and I don't know why the picture didn't show up. Maybe it'll show up if I click. There it goes. This is Emerson Green at Devon's, which is a much more, I, I would say, community-friendly and ecologically viable kind of, of a cluster development, which they've built there, and maybe that's what the future holds for a place like Green Acres. This is in Lemonster, Fornia Ballfield, some of you may know about it. Big, big parking lot, very few catch basins, lots of runoff. While at Devon's, they took similar-sized parking lots, put in biotreatment swales, permeable pavement, and have greatly ameliorated the, the runoff problems at a cost that's less than conventional parking lot development. And they've been able, there at Devon's, to really convince a lot of developers that this is, this kind of thing is, is not only good business, but it, it saves money. So the, the project co-benefits are not only the educational aspects of, of helping adults and children to better understand what, what we can do with, with natural processes that's less expensive than gray infrastructure, but also collaborating on moving forward into actually changing the landscape in a, in a positive way. That's what they've done at Devon's, and I, I call this to your attention, not because I necessarily know enough about our, our ordinance and the way that you practice your work, to, to know whether we're doing the things already that Devon's has, has been exemplifying, or maybe we could learn from them and, and do more of what they're doing. Because they've actually built into their, their site plan regulations and ordinances a lot of these kinds of beneficial approaches, which are listed here. And the same thing with their stormwater regs. I think that if we, we really need to begin to turn our attention to the fact that it's our developed landscape that contributes most to the kinds of problems that, that we're seeing. And, and by the way, when you, when you cut down a forest to put in a solar farm, there's a lot of heavy equipment that passes over that soil, compacts it, and greatly reduces the infiltrability of, of that soil. That's probably got a lot to do with what's going on at some of these sites, and, and it's why a site such as Mass, sorry, as, as Oak Hill Country Club's proposed solar is so difficult to, to plan for in an appropriate way. I don't think a lot of the engineers that are doing this kind of work are necessarily up to date in terms of what the future holds in terms of climate change. The, the climate models indicate that things are likely to only get worse for us, unfortunately, because we haven't been able to make enough of the, the changes necessary yet. Hopefully, it will happen, but to make use of as much low-impact design and nature-based solutions to, as possible, will go a long way towards putting us in, in the right direction. What you see here is that, is that kind of parking lot development. So I don't know if you folks have thought about this, but could we consider upgrading our ordinances? And I would, I would draw your attention to this webpage that Devon's Enterprise Commission has, which has a lot of, of basically the, the kind of model bylaws and regulations that we might want to consider here. So that's, that's what I have for you in a nutshell.
Can I ask you one quick question, Ralph?
Certainly.
So, and, and because this is going to come up soon, and because you're obviously well-versed in this information, the, the conversation, you brought up the forestry in our area. As of right now, aside from timber harvesting, which is selling timber for profit, a property owner can take down trees on their own property. It's a basic private property right.
That's right.
Do we suggest, do you suggest that the city restrict how much land can be harvested or how many trees can be taken down on any given property? And if so, how do we figure out that calculation?
You know, it is something that some municipalities have done, but I think it's, it's like the Cambridges and the, you know, a few, a few of the unusual.
Right.
More, you know, municipalities have, have implemented tree-cutting ordinances. I don't think that would fly here, probably. But I think for us to expect that the Department of Environmental Conservation, sorry, the Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR, service foresters are going to be ensuring that best management practices are actually being carried out, according to the forest cutting plans that, that are submitted by private landowners, is probably a bit naive of us to think.
Okay.
It may take some much more impactful approaches, and it's, it's hard because people are not used to it. But I think that we, we, we owe it to ourselves to be more forward-looking about things like this, because otherwise, we're just going to really suffer the consequences down the road.
Right. And the reason why I ask is because, you know, you take a site like, you know, you mentioned the Shea Street Oak Hill Solar, the, from a planning perspective, if you take out the argument of cutting down trees, because they could do that today if they reasonably wanted to, and we have engineers telling us we can design it to be better than it is now, from a planning board perspective, it, it's hard. All the arguments we get from people almost seem, they seem arbitrary. They seem not based on fact, where engineers are telling us, oh, no, it's fine, we can engineer it this way. So we, we get put in a hard position where they're saying, we're designing it to be better than it is now, the trees aren't really a factor in our decision, so then how do you, you see what I'm saying? How do you, how, as a board, do we, do you, do you say, oh, this isn't the, you know, the best situation for the city? That's not, you don't have to answer that. That was a rhetorical question.
No, it's all right, Paul. I'd like to answer. I, I, I appreciate what you're saying. I think it's, I think that is the prevailing approach. We, we hear it all the time. When I was on the CONSCOM, we, we heard these kinds of things, but the fact is that you have to look a little deeper. Take Oak Hill Country Club. A lot of that subsoil is compact glacial till. It doesn't have much ability to infiltrate water, more than about to a depth of three, three feet or so. Then it's going to move laterally down slope over the surface of the hardpan. You can't engineer that, that kind of land to accept more water than it, than it's possible to accept. And so if, if you're taking the engineer's word for it without looking deeper, unfortunately, you're going to be in trouble down the road.
Well, all due respect, these are engineers that are trained to do this. I don't, I mean, I don't know what your background is, but their, their job, they are licensed to do that.
No, I, I get it. Yeah, I'm a soil scientist. I, I had many engineers working for me over the years, so I have a lot of, a lot of respect for engineers.
It'll be very interesting to see how the conversation goes in the future, because it's, like I said, it's, we, we're going to deal with these, you know, we're going to deal with these issues more and more, just given how bad the weather's been, so.
There'll be some approaches we'll have to take a look at.
There'll be some approaches we'll have to take a look at.
Yeah.
Even on environmental justice and mass balance, potential. When, when is enough enough in, in the, and the, the worth of the, the trees and what that promotes to our, our environment and health of, of community?
You bet.
But I do appreciate the presentation.
Thank you very much. I, I appreciate your time. I know it's very late, but.
It was very good.
Yeah.
Ralph, I do have one question for you.
Sure.
Pete Cap here.
Yeah, hi, Pete.
Hi. I think, I think the planning board can certainly look closely at a lot of the projects that come in front of the board. And it's fairly easy, in a lot of cases, to incorporate some of these nature-based solutions into the project. I think, I think right now, even the construction company that's working on Main Street, Upper Main Street and the Upper Main West Street area, I think they're doing a lot of work similar to this and incorporating some green space into their roadwork, if I'm, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of places where we could be a little more involved with, with doing this.
I agree. And I'm, I'm sure you're doing a, a lot of these things. In some cases, I think you're, you're, you're definitely showing the right spirit. Could push a little harder. I think that, that other communities are ahead of us in turn, in, in those respects. From talking to people in, you know, closer into Metro West, I know that the Charles River Watershed Association did their own flood modeling and found that the FEMA, FEMA flood maps were pretty useless because they're backward-looking. They're not forward-looking. I think someone, one of your earlier proponents today talked about the Cornell Program Projects, sorry, models. So I think by, by looking towards a, a more enlightened approach, we can maybe prevent ourselves falling into some traps that, that are basically the result of, I would call it, business-as-usual prevailing. So.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you more going forward.
Very insightful. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ralph.
Okay, thank you, guys. Have a good night.
You too.
Thanks.
We do have underneath "Other Business Municipal Planning Board Notification Form."
Is this the registry form, Chantel?
No, this is, it's a notification for the Twin City Rail Trail. It's a notification to the planning board, and they need a signature and an approval.
What, what's the notification of? What do they ask?
Proposed Twin Cities Rail Trail Chapter 91 Planning Board Notification. Looks like for working, designing, like a bridge pathway.
Mm-hmm. I, I did upload it, too. It's, it is.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it's online.
I want to pull it up.
Yeah.
Description of project, proposed construction of a new elevated shared-use bridge over North Nashville River as part of Twin Cities Rail Trail, connecting the cities of Lemonster and Pittsburgh. Proposed minimum clearance from ordinary high water to bottom of bridge cord is 33 feet with an approximate footprint, 916 square feet, to be completed by the municipal planning board representative. And I hereby certify the project described above as in more fully detailed in the permities, waterways, license, application, and plans have been submitted by the permutee to the municipal planning board. So seeking our recommendation, our approval. Portion to municipal planning board, project lane. Pretty much that we received notification.
Okay. I've never heard of this before. I've never even seen a form like this before. And it seems, looks very important. It's so weird. I mean, I read it. I still don't get, I, I.
It has to do with, Chapter 91 has to do with, like, public access to waterways.
Yeah.
Been filing for that. So the city is the applicant here.
It says, so did they submit the plans? It says, "We're certifying that they submitted the plans to, have been submitted by the permutee to the municipal planning board." Do they submit plans?
These are the, this is the only thing I received, or these.
So you're signing, Paul. It says, "I hereby certify the project described above and more fully detailed in the permutee, permities, waterway license application and plans have been submitted to the municipal planning board."
By the permutee to the municipal planning board. So the city of Pittsburgh has sent it to us?
Yes.
Well, they are specifically asking for us, but what I'm, it's fine. I don't really care. It's, they're telling you, you're certifying that you got the plans. That's what you're signing. You're certifying that you got their plans.
Resalidation, this is blank, proof of signature.
Whatever. Don't matter to me.
Doobin Waterway.
If you want to take more time with this, this is to be signed by our representative, which in this case would be either you or Chantel. It could even be Chantel. It's the planning board representative. I don't even think, this doesn't even necessarily have to involve us. If you want Chantel to look into it, it says, "To be completed by the municipal planning board representative," which is, you know, always used to be Mike. It very easily could be Chantel.
Well, I guess we would just authorize the person to sign.
Right, but it's not even asking for that. It's not asking for a board, a board, anything. It's just the representative saying that, yes, we receive the plans. I think that's all you have to do. It's like, you know, plans get into the planning board office. This is, yes, we receive the plans. That's what, that's what this is.
Did we receive the plans?
Apparently not.
That was the question.
And we can't sign it?
I mean, I can follow up on it.
Like I said, whatever you want to do, Paula, I don't think it involves a board vote, is my point. It doesn't ask for one. There's nothing on here that says it is one. It's saying the munis, the municipal planning board representative, which it says, by definition, I think would be Chantel.
I don't, I don't think so, but I think it's just going to be a board member. But, yeah.
Yeah, what, again, whatever you feel comfortable with.
Okay.
I, 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 it doesn't, it doesn't involve a boat, a vote. It doesn't involve anything.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
This is Liz.
Oh.
Thank you, Liz.
Didn't you know you were there?
Hi. Yes. We, we have the plans in our office.
Oh, that's good.
And we can hopefully send them to their very large files. So it might be a matter of having to, like, upload to the webpage.
I think it was more technicality, Liz. As long as you have them, that's what we're certifying.
We want to say that we're certifying we have them.
Yeah.
As long as you have them, I mean, obviously, we'll see them eventually.
We absolutely have the plans. And it's very exciting that the next year, there'll be, next construction season, they'll be working on that bridge from about Second Street to the Mart Intermodal Center on Main Street. It'll be a 25-foot bridge.
Perfect.
Thank you, Liz.
Can we, like, come by and see them?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Well, we, you know what? We have them electronically. So it might be good for us to print out a copy.
Oh.
You can always do, Shanta, you can always do, IT can do a Dropbox link because there's no limit in size. And you can just send the link out to everyone. That's the way we used to do our meeting materials when they were too big.
Yeah.
Amy LeBlank is our project manager for this.
Yep.
So she can definitely answer any questions that you might have about the.
All right.
Oh, actually, instead of emailing them, you could just put them in our DocuCenter because there's no limit in size.
Yeah, that, that's what I was thinking. We put it in the Docu.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Perfect.
So there, it's signed.
Okay.
All good.
Thank you.
And I, we have an item, we can't spend a lot, we have minutes to approve before we vacate. Communications, I think it was just going to be mentioning that you're working on updating the fee schedule. And you'll have a presentation at some point, but you've been researching it to update our fees, which will include updates to our planning board rules and regs. But there's a process for some of those fee updates. They may have to also go to city council, too. So it'll be, it'll be a process, but it's something that's being looked into. Do I have it?
My understanding, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Liz.
Go ahead.
My understanding is, I was looking through the ordinances, and there is some language about unless otherwise specified, city council has to approve all fees. I'm going to check with our city attorney, but I expect that city council will have to approve the fees.
As I mentioned to Paula, the easiest way to do this anyway, since they're, they're the controlling authority for special permit fees, we can draft a proposal between the community development office and the planning board and send the whole list to the council for approval.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Yes, there'll be fees that, I mean, we've got smart growth zoning fees, different types of fees that we have.
Modification fees.
Modification fees, things of different natures that we'll need to address. Make sure we have something.
I've started, yes.
Great.
Yeah, so hopefully, we'll have something for you soon.
Okay, so there's an update there.
I did have one communication that I wanted to add. Well, I'm sure he doesn't want the accolades. Our own Peter Capadaglie was just named a Boulder Award winner for the 27th Boulder Awards, which is outstanding contributions to civic life, to the use of public communications, and civic engagement.
Well, thank you for noticing.
Good job.
Good job.
Very proud of you.
Thank you.
Good work.
That's awesome, Pete. Thanks.
That's what, it's a privilege.
You want to do minutes?
Yes.
Oh, can't just punt these?
What's that?
Amanda said, "We can't just punt these." I don't, I don't disagree, but Paul and I spent some time, but we'll go over them quick. We won't, we don't even need to go over the changes unless anyone has any changes.
Changes for September of 2023 minutes? Are there any changes? And Tracy's name is spelt right and the word principal is spelt right?
Make a motion to approve September 19th meeting minutes as amended? Or just as on the screen?
Yeah, not amended.
Yep, no, no. Just, just approve them.
Okay. Motion made to approve September 2023 minutes?
And Amanda seconded it.
And with the second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say oppose. Roll call. Amanda?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. And then we have last.
We have March 26th.
Last month's meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from Tuesday, March 26th.
All right.
Second.
Motion's made with the second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say oppose. Roll call vote. Amanda?
Aye.
Allyn?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula, aye. Minutes, September 2023, March 2024. See, we're getting, we're doing the last months and then a back one till we get caught up.
Good job.
One or two, so, yes. Or get close. Awesome. And so is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
With the second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, there's no roll call vote on this one.
Never once heard anyone oppose to that. All right.